Good evening, everyone. This is Natasha Rivera and I will be chairing this meeting remotely. As a preliminary matter. As a chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Albota. Elizabeth?
Do you hear her?
Oh, oh, nope, I just heard Colleen say, did I hear her, but I didn't hear. Do you have a microphone in front of you or is this?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Oh, now I can hear you, yes. Okay. Um, thank you. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Can I try to hear you now? Yes.
Okay. I can hear, yeah, both of you guys, great now. I just, for some reason, it. I couldn't hear before, but much better. Um, I know Hillary Griffiths will not be joining us this evening. And is Mauro, she's, she'll be a little bit. Think late, she's not there yet, right? Okay, school committee reps, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative, and I think we have. Rachel Martins joining us this evening, or is Kaylee Donahue? I see Kaylee on. Okay, wonderful. Um. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Here.
Brian Haas?
Here.
Wayne White?
Here.
Jeff Ranti?
Yes.
Liz York?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and Brian, do we have Chuck or Charles this evening there?
Neither, you have Denise here.
Oh, okay, great. Denise and who else?
Karen Lindgren. Keith Kenny. Here. I was just opening up.
No, thank you, because I can't see exactly who was in and who would be. I was looking at my screen to see who was joining. Online, and I see a couple of staff, but I didn't know if they would be participating in. In any presentation, so thanks for, for calling them out for me, I appreciate it. Um, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted as a hybrid meeting as allowed by Chapter Two. Of the Act of 2023, signed into law by Governor Healy on March 29, 2023. This act continues to exempt certain provisions under the open meeting law regarding remote meetings and public access until March 31, 2025. This committee is convening via Zoom and in person as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. If you're planning to record or broadcast this meeting, please use the raise your hand function now to notify the chair as required by law. I do not see any hands raised, and I just want to reiterate for the community what Colleen mentioned earlier, in case anyone didn't hear that. If anyone is requesting, um. Permission to take over your viewing or screen, please do not allow that. We have had some Zoom bombing attempts. So just deny anything unless it's Colleen. Um, okay, meeting materials. Along with the agenda, most of tonight's meeting materials are available on the Maynard Public School website in a folder titled 2023-2024 Agendas. Under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the chair notes otherwise. Public comments is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the public as such. Its structure primarily supports a unidirectional recording of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Here are the general rules for any form of public comments. Any person wishing to speak and make a comment during a virtual part of the meeting may do so by signing up. And speaking in advance up into the public comment agenda item at the link provided on the agenda. And I believe it's posted as well. Um. Please have your Zoom name match that we'll be able to unmute you to speak. Public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone who wishes to comment has the opportunity to be heard. No person may comment more than once without permission of the chair. As time allows, the chair could consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if it is related to the topic that has not been. Uh, brought up yet. Email comments in advance up until the public comment agenda item at comments for SC meeting at maynard.k12 MA.us. You must state in the subject line, public comments, and include your first and last name and town to ensure your comment can be read. Comments read by the chair will only be read for three minutes. If the, if the submitted comments are longer, they'll be cut off at the three minute mark. To ensure all comments are able to be read in their entirety, it is suggested that you keep them to approximately 350 words. However, submitted comments longer than 350 words will be included in the public record in their entirety. Anyone can submit comments for public record after the public comment agenda item has passed by providing an email to. Comments for SC meeting at maynard.k12 MA.us. Up until the end of the meeting, specifically stating their desire to have the additional comments included. Before I go on to the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for an effective and clear meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will ask each member for any comments, questions, or motions that they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold off speaking until your name is called, and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the chair and take care not to interrupt anyone who is speaking. Finally, each vote tonight will be taken via roll call vote. Um, and I will go ahead and open the meeting at 7:08 via roll call vote. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Okay, and I think we're still. I don't see Mauro there yet, right? So it's just me? Natasha Rivera, yes, all right. Um, moving on to. The first item on the agenda is urgent business. Any urgent business superintendent Haas?
No urgent business tonight.
Okay, great. Um, moving on, public comments. Colleen, I know we don't have any emails for public comments. Do we have anything in, in writing?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, and moving on to the student representatives' report. I saw Kaylee. Hi. Oh, you got it?
Yep.
Thank you for joining us this evening. The floor is yours.
Starting with the highlights, um, all of our fall teams participated in the MIA tournaments. The fall season is now over except for a JV and varsity football game. Um, term one has ended and report cards were issued this week. Spirit Week started with Decades Day. Today, we have tried to spread the word about different themes to encourage participation. Um, for concerns, we, and solutions, we have self-directed field trips, which was brought up at SAC this week. Seniors proposed excuse absences for self-directed field trips as part of senior project. For instance, a student doing a project about careers in art might visit an art gallery. This will be discussed with Ms. LaBelle and Mr. Levine, who are our senior project teachers. Um, front door during morning arrival. Students had questions about tardiness to school when the front door closes, et cetera. It was agreed that the door would not be closed when students are approaching it, even if the bell has rung. Um, is there a way to quicken the tardy line? Ms. Doktorov has been working with the IT director to install a barcode scanner to expedite the process. Um, students had questions about supports for students who miss classes due to absences, late arrivals, or early dismissals. Ms. York shared information about the academic support center ask that is being piloted, targeted extra help during the school day. This, the new adjustment counselor, Ms. Hull, helps with the social emotional piece, and the, and the academic teacher helps with the schoolwork. Um, NHS tutoring, limited availability during the school hour and wide availability after school. Homework Club is available to all students Monday through Thursday in C201. Students who might need ass, access to ask are encouraged to talk to their school counselor. The school counselors can also act as liaisons to set up after-school help with teachers if needed. And then on our coming up, we have Spirit Week continues tomorrow with Career Day. Um, Powerpuff and Bonfire will be on Monday at Alumni. They, we have a pep rally on Tuesday to mark the break. Um, the Thanksgiving game with the varsity football team. Um, will be at West Boylston this year. It's 10 a.m. Thanksgiving Day. Um, Thanksgiving Day, uh, Thanksgiving break starts on Wednesday. Um, telephone prep is fully underway. Um, mental health screeners, I decide, universal screeners, et cetera. The counselors will receive information from the screeners that will help them plan their lessons. Basketball and indoor track, along with co-op hockey and swimming, start the week after Thanksgiving. The homecoming dance is this Friday. And parent-teacher conferences this afternoon and tomorrow evening.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for that update, and I will. Go through the rest of the school committee to see if anyone has any questions. Um, or comments. Mary?
Thank you very much, really, as usual, for your thoroughness. Much appreciated.
Uh, Elizabeth?
Yeah, just thank you very much, and a couple of questions about how things work. So the ASKS during the day, is that at lunchtime, or when does the ASK happen?
Um, I believe it actually is during a class, so it might be during the class you missed. Um, that, I can see how that could potentially seem redundant. I'm not entirely sure the system, but I actually believe that. I'll be using ASK at some point in the future, so I could potentially answer more questions then.
Um, and then the health screeners, the, the mental health screeners, is that happening in health classes, or how is that?
So the I Decide is a survey that the school takes. I believe there's a designated block where all the teachers will instruct the students to take out their Chromebooks. I can't recall exactly which day it's going to be. I think it's soon. And I'm not sure if this is considered a mental health screener, but I believe we're having. Um, some, like, rep, like, professionals or specialists come in and interview students individually. Or, I can't remember exactly what, but. Yeah. So the I Decide will be a survey that all the students take at once in the school day.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Hey, um, I just wanted to thank you for your thorough report as well. Um, I, I, I wanted to just a little bit understand the front door. Locking, I've heard a couple of feedback, maybe even last year and this year. Are you, are you feeling like it's? Not improving, or is this something that's improving, but we're looking for a little bit more improvement, or do you feel like it's gotten worse? I just want to understand that. A little bit better.
So I would say the issue has stayed pretty consistent throughout the last couple of years, but I think the issue is students feel. Just very frustrated when they get to school within like a minute of the late bell, and then they have to. Go through the process of ringing the doorbell, being let into the school, then waiting in line to get their late pass, and by the time they get to class, they feel they've missed more than they. Would have if they had just been allowed to, you know. Say, we, we, some solutions have been proposed, such as like student IDs, having barcode scanners, for example. Um, that would simply just mark, like, that would be a digital late pass in a sense, because. Students, I think it's just a very, like, emotionally frustrating to be, like, a lot of times, if like, having the door shut in their face can be pretty upsetting. And having to wait.
When you're late, usually there's something that may have happened already, so your mind, you're already probably not settled very well, and then you're. Anxious, and you're kind of starting your day a little bit discombobulated. Um, so I'm glad, I'd like to hear, you know, think more about that. I'm glad that there's an opportunity for that conversation to. Uh, move forward. I, I know that I always get concerned with safety. And I just want to, for my, you know, as a parent and as a perspective of, you know, how much. Flexibility and, and keeping, you know, access points open long. And that, that just generally all schools are always, you know, it's always the back of everyone's mind is, you know, how do we make sure that the students need what they need and access to the building? But yet, we're also protecting the students and the staff that are there. Um, you know, in the event, you know, someone has some other, you know, plans in mind, and so that's always a, a delicate balance, and I appreciate you. Bringing that up and having that conversation is, you know, how do we balance convenience but safety without, you know, compromising safety, so. Thank you for that. Um, and I think the only other. Question that I, well, actually, it was just more of an update to, to you. Um, last week, the school committee had a special meeting, and this is just for the student body. We, we talked about bleachers. And we had some designs that we. Um, we had proceeded with a proposal that was made, and I just wanted to make sure that the student body. Uh, also understands that this is something that is a priority for the school committee. We are, you know, actively. Even though the bleachers still look in the same condition and roped off, there's several people working behind the scenes to put forward effort to get. Designs, um, to get them, and there's efforts, you know, going to be happening within the next week. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that that was an update that I could, you know, provide to you. Uh, for, for the student body. I mean, obviously, I think everyone wishes that things would move faster, but municipality stuff doesn't always move at the speed that everyone wants. But there is, uh, progress, so I just want to make sure that that is a message that carries to the student body for anyone who's asking, that we are actively working. Very hard, um, to get that, and the hope is that we can get. Funding secured by at our annual town spring meeting, so that's the, hopefully, fingers crossed timeline that we can. See coming down the pike, okay?
Yeah, thank you so much. I know, um, I can speak on behalf of most, most of the student body when they say that they would definitely appreciate that effort. I think it's. Definitely a big concern for a lot of, especially students who are graduating soon.
Of course, of course, this is every, I mean. Understood, feedback point taken, and that's why I wanted to make sure you understood that. It is something that we all are. Um, actively working on as well. And we do have a couple of other, for later on, our, in our meeting, um, budget conversations, so you're more than welcome to hang out if you want to hear. Um, you know, feedback about budget and literacy, but you know, you're more than welcome to. If not, um, thank you for, for participating this evening.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so now, moving on to the next agenda item, the superintendent report. Brian?
Yeah, great, glad to be here again. Um, just reminding you that the building project test. Um, very big, will win with an eighty-two percent. In favor rate, um, so that's exciting, and we've had one building committee meeting since then, and. We will be continuing meeting frequently to the process forward. I think in the December sixth committee meeting. It'll be has to vote on the next round of paperwork that's submitted to NSBA. Uh, the funding break. Uh, we had interviews at the high school last week. They had about twenty or so people participated in. Um, a lot of fun, if you've never done that before, I know they put the ASK out. Um, if it ever fits your schedule, it is a ton of fun. Um, you have the opportunity to interview four students, you get their resume in advance. And it's just an opportunity to, for them to practice resume writing, for them to practice. Selling themselves and getting to know their own story and going through those motions of answering the questions when they're kind of on the hot seat. And for the person who's doing the interview, you get to know, you get to meet and really get to know four students a little bit better, and it was just a wonderful experience, and I heard that around. From. Um, it's often some of the same people who are part of the annals. For senior projects as well. So they must have the, you know, the flexibility to be able to participate, uh, but a lot, a lot of fun. So big, uh, shout out to, uh, Gina Bell and Jay.
Hey.
Levine, um, thank you, thank you, who put that together, and just for all the volunteers participating, great experience. Um. We had Veterans Day ceremonies, um, very different at each of the buildings, but we got great feedback. Um, in turn, and it was, I, I will say, having watched the, I was able to. I think we started here at Fowler, and then I went to Green Meadow, and what was noticeable, especially about, I mean, the former. Middle school principal, is they have the entire school gym, which starts to feel and look like a pep rally, where they want to loop and holler. They would practice, they called the veterans, they marched in, they brought in callers first, and then each one was called out. Several of them, and it was moving, several of them were in full dress uniforms, obviously retired, voted, the first one was, uh. Uh, retired relieved, somebody else was Lieutenant Colonel of the Air Force. Lots of people were regular clothes, but it was, what was very noticeable, we got emails to this, is, is how. Well behaved and respectful the students were, standing, sitting, applauding. At no point did they lose their composure, and then by the time they went down, they were equally on point, they were a lot shorter, a lot more excited, and they moved cars, but they do a parade through the cafeteria at Green Meadow. Handing out cards and saying thank you, and then they sang a couple of songs. That, they did a couple of different things at the preschool as well, so it was just really, really well done. We got an email. From one of the veterans who said, really, the way you guys did, and this was in relation specifically to Fowler, uh, just the ceremony and whatnot, said, the way you guys did, that should be replicated at school and state. It was that touchy. And we don't always hear the good things, so it's nice to be able to share the good things. Um. And I don't really have to go all wrong with that updates, because Kaylee just did a street job stat, but if you were able to catch any of the postseason. Um, games, weeks, patches, depending on sport, it was a ton of fun. The kids should all be very proud of themselves. The kids, the families, the coaches, they all really stepped up and did a great job this season to go postseason in Massachusetts. It's not an easy thing to do. Um, the one thing that she mentioned that I thought was really neat, um, was that we actually added a co-op swimming team. Which super, we had a handful of kids who obviously want to do that, not enough to have our own team, so it's really nice, uh, I give. Amy Ariadna for arranging that funding, you know, the school that's willing to take us, take us our low number of swimmers. Uh, but that's another just exciting opportunity for kids to be involved in school. Uh, what I have for you today, more next time, I feel like, keep quiet often, speaks.
And. You're welcome. Um, Mary? Any questions, feedback, comments?
I was, um, like, um, as much impressed with the Veterans Day. Um, what I saw online that actually followed, but it's just, if we can't do enough for them, so I'm grateful that we. That we acknowledge and celebrate. Of course, and I'm also great, grateful that we've got the co-op swimming team now, because my son, that's where it goes, was, and continues, is, um, part of, was part of the co-op for the hockey. Uh, kind of pleased, but that continues, um, twenty-five years later, to, um, you know, the way we do that, so I'm grateful to. Be for, um, within that. So that's it.
Elizabeth?
Yeah, no, just thank you for everything, and it was really nice to have, like, you know, the support is all with her, and of course, like we said about the new school. It's pretty fantastic, so.
Um, I also, you know, I thoroughly enjoyed watching the, I know, I think the PTO shared the video for the, the Veterans Day, um, procession. And it was really nice to see. You know, how proud our veterans were to be there, you know, and, and some of them in, in their dress uniform and. Um, but just a whole bunch of different, um, range of, of generations there, so that was really lovely to see. Um, I wasn't in your superintendent report, uh, Brian, but I know there was a, a communication regarding vaping that was an incident with, just at the middle school. And, um. Thank you, Principal, uh, Kenny, for addressing that. I know that that was something that, communication that went out to all the. The parents as well, um, at the school, and just to reiterate how important. That is, I, I've, as a parent, I've heard some feedback myself, and I know this is just something that's not unique to Maynard, but I'm, I'm glad that we are being responsive and communicating, keeping parents communicated. On the happenings, um, because of important partnership they have. Is there anything that? I guess my question would be anything that you would suggest that how parents can maybe be more, um. Involved or questions, or what do you suggest for parents as this? You know, matter might escalate or evolve in different ways. I hate to put you on the spot, and I'm sorry.
Are you talking, are you talking to me or to Principal Kenny? I'm not sure, I just want to make sure I know who should respond.
Well, I know that you sent us the email from, from Principal Kenny, but I just thinking as for parents, um. You know, how can we be better partners if there's an opportunity to support the education, um, you know, environment? In, in that area, because a lot of these things happen kind of. Unaware, I don't know if that's.
We can probably respond to that, I mean, at a, at a high level, I would say parents, as a parent. So children, always worth having a conversation about the health and, or not help aspect of vaping and sort of the long-term consequences of that. So having open conversations at home, because certainly kids, young adults, even adults. Don't necessarily know the health implications to vaping, so having those conversations at home, always helpful, and I'm sure.
Is there, um. I don't know if middlesex, maybe just to be more. Specific, we used to have these, um, conferences, like middlesex youth would come out and do these, like, presentations, like, community on. Particular topics, and I, I thought they did one, Mary might remember, um. Like, I think vaping was one, a couple, the, the SRO had arranged something, um, I don't know if we've had them in a while. And I just, you know, just kind of throwing it out there, if, if there is a feeling of an uptick, might be something that we. Maybe would want to engage with the, the parent community as well, just to kind of, we're new parents. Few years, you know, might be helpful to just put some information out there. So.
Yeah, that's a really good point. I'm very familiar with, uh, those partnerships for you, and they do do many different, uh. Family-centered, student-centered, and specifically parent-centered trainings. Uh, I'm certainly gonna, I like that suggestion, looking into, see what they are, they're up right now, and I can reach out to them to see if there's anything. That they can tailor to our school. Uh, just one clarification, because I don't want our community to feel confused or left out of the loop. This situation was specific to one particular grade, so my communication went out to that particular grade. It didn't go up to the entire school. So some people that are hearing that now might be a little confused by that. Uh.
Sorry, yes, I, I know that I heard it from other, other people as well, because Maynard spreads really fast, even if it's just for, for one, it'll. Um, yeah, thank you, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, um, you know, I'm certainly, this happened late in the day today, um, so, um, David Snyder and I have a plan to connect with our health teachers tomorrow. Just to kind of make sure that they are in, in the full loop with, you know, the, the breadth of what happened today, um, to see whether they can start. Um. Either increasing or putting more of a focus on that, particularly in that one grade, to make sure that, um, our students are very. Aware of the health implications, um, both short-term and long-term with vaping, as well as other, you know. Nicotine products.
Thank you so much, I appreciate. That, and I, again, my apologies for, for putting you on the spot. I just had a couple of questions that were raised to me, and I. I saw you there and I took advantage of the opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um. I think now, Brian, unless you have anything else, I think we're ready to move on to the budget requests to the school committee from the school councils.
Yeah, I'll just give sort of overview so you have a sense of what's coming from, and there's a variety of people here in person, some of the people I'll talk for, because they couldn't be here tonight. But as you know, we're, we're pretty significantly underfunded in terms of the level service budget, which I call a bits of effort budget, so. Some years, that's not the case, depends on the system, depends on the year, and it really does sort of drive the conversations within the budget season of, what are we asking? So we're roughly, and, you know. Roughly eight hundred thousand dollars underfunded. Just to let that sink in. So as we're going through the budget season, I'm not directing. Principals and department heads and whatnot to dig really deep and come up with a laundry list of things that you need or want. Because frankly, it's more a matter of what might you want? That we can change how we're doing things to be some of the budget, because we have such a difference between a level service budget and what the town, at this point, looks like they're like with a headache. So I just want to sort of plant that seed, so when you hear from them, they may not have a laundry list of items or things, because it wasn't worth. It wasn't an appropriate use of time for this budget season. It may look very different next year to the year end.
Thank you for level setting. No, that's, I'll, I'll have, um, my own finance committee updates, um, I can share later, but I'll go ahead and. Okay, with, um, did you want, yeah.
Yeah, so we might, so, my thinking is, we'll start with the people that are in the room, if it's okay with you, and then we can go with the people online. Uh, people who weren't able to be here. Um, with Rob and Karen here from Green Meadow.
Great.
Um, sort of stand, talk a bit, you had a call in one of these, please. So thank you for having us today. Our information from our school council and working with our school council, there are four goals that we have set aside. And those are, uh, parent communication and looking at our absenteeism.
And looking at our absenteeism, what we did is through our smores, uh, communication. In through individual communication with parents, we're going to continue to express how, um. Being president of school affects the child developmentally, socially, academically. We did collect some data and we synthesized that. We're still looking at it from last year throughout the next two years and seeing if we can look at that improvement. We have obviously, I talked about our math pilot that's coming up. And we are looking at the time period between January and March, looking at our math pilot. And then the final decision will be ready and implementation for twenty four, twenty five. With that will come professional learning in the twenty four, twenty five, uh, time period. We are looking at social emotional learning as a goal. Uh, within that is we've extended our smores letter in order to have. Our, one of our school counselors, Julie Danforth, who runs a, an amazing, uh, SEL program. She is now going to be sending letters or multiple articles to parents to help inform. The community and the parents about how SEL runs. And we also had trauma-based education for our staff. That took place in a mental health training. Uh, and we will continue to update staff in the twenty four, twenty five. Finally, we continue with our literacy and writing. We've extended the phonics to reading program, uh, to grade two. This year and we had started it in, uh, K one and, um, we are looking to, to extend that. And we also have members being trained using crafting minds. And we've also used some improving our writing, using the writing rope through Jones, Sedena, Sedena, which was last year. Uh, we will continue with professional learning in those areas as we continue to work on our literacy writing. So those are our core goals that we have set aside. Um, most of those do not take a lot of budgetary expansion. We understand that the financial times that we in, but we know that professional learning, uh, will get that and communication of parents. Will broaden us and continue with what we're doing here at Green Meadow.
Okay, um. So I, I just wanted to say, um, I'm going to go around and I'm going to, my, myself, I'm going to reserve my literacy questions for the literacy. Presentation. But I would like to understand numbers. When I think about budget, there is some aspect of numbers that. Need to be considered here and I am not seeing a lot of dollars noted on. The pages, I'm wondering if you can give a proximity of. Of what that looks like for the, the requests that, and I know we've heard a little bit about it, but. Just in a goal, the things that you've asked for. What is the, is this looking to be something that is added into the budget or is this something that could be absorbed into the budget or is it net neutral? Where it's not going to be an added cost? It's just how we're being more efficient and how we're allocating the dollars. Can you? Can you frame that a little bit or explain that?
So under our parent communication, there is no obvious, there is no dollar extent to that. That is our communication, just continuing with broadening our communication to parents. That would be the same thing with our socially emotional learning and the articles that would go out. It's again, information. And trying to bring in community through that. So we, we already have the smart program. It's how we just utilize it better. So there's no cost, extra costs to those programs. Our math pilot is already being, um, the budget is already being, um. Divided or, or decided upon Chuck Karagidis, the curriculum coordinator has, has worked on that and that's already in the budget. We, we will look forward to not only what the math pilot will cost, but then after that, what the yearly cost of each of those programs will do. Will become, uh, that is, will be figured out as we do our pilot our programs. So for the elementary school and some of those is, there's a yearly cost to buy workbooks, which may not be the same at all other levels. Um, so, uh, Chuck will work with those vendors in order to come up with that price tag, uh, for that. But he has put away, put aside a amount of money in order to run this pilot and get ready for that. Uh, program in twenty four, twenty five. I want to say is it's over fifty thousand dollars that he's had set aside for that. That is K through eight. Uh, for that. Uh, and as far as the, uh, I understand with the literacy and the writing. The phonics to reading is a, is a program that is we budgeted already in my, in my budget is not, uh, extra. We have taken a look at our foundations program, we replace our foundation program with our phonics to reading program. So that is a budget neutral, uh, for us.
Okay, so the, these one through five are already baked into what you're anticipating to propose. Um, and would not be beyond what you're. I know, like, I know, like technology, sometimes we, we see things like we need five, you know, smart boards or something like that. So we're. We're not seeing any of those type of expenses that we're not able to fund at Green Meadow, but, um. But we, you know, would like to, I just want to make sure that we're being comprehensive and understanding what our, our need is, even if it's not funded. But I think that's the part that I think the school committee really benefits from, because this sounds like we're building it in. But I'm sure there's things that we would like to do that can't be built in. And I think that's what we don't always hear at our level. So can you maybe speak to some of that? Like, what are the things that we, we really would love to explore, but we, um. Weren't able to necessarily.
Well, I think, I think, you know, purposely, we've taken the time in the last several years in order to work on our literacy program. So that has been very well funded. Um, we continue to do that. That is a five-year program. It does not stop in, in, in one or two years. That has to continue onward into your next cycle of when you look at things. The math program, which is something we began working on a year ago through a variety of studies. Um, that has already, as you said, been put into our budget. So those two large programs for us. If there is anything that is, is we're going to be in need of, it would be at some point a science program, but that again is looking at our cycle. Um, when it's time for that, we will budget for it. It is not time for that. Uh, we are the council council and I and Karen are very. Happy with where we're going with what we're doing for the literacy and where we're going for the math, two large components of our learning. In our curriculum base. And so we will look at the science program in the upcoming years. You know, when that, when that cycle is right. I mean, till that time period, we do use an online program, but that's already also budgeted. Into our yearly budget, uh, Natasha, that says, there's no, there's no extra for that for us.
Great, Mary?
Um, yeah, I think this might be more of a question for you, Brian. Uh, when Rob talks about parent communication absenteeism, I know we have that. Not extra bus, but we're trying to deal with the absenteeism and that. So is that going to be an extra? Is that part of this?
So that, the bus?
Yeah.
So that bus actually did not cost us.
Right.
Depends on how many students register for the bus. That is a violence.
Oh, I was okay.
The high, the high school, right? It was that, we lost a high school route this year, but we may not lose it in the next year. Was that it, Colin? Because the class was lower.
No issue. We have no issues with the high school bus.
Okay. And so, so I guess my, my, one of my questions is, um, where are we finding the absenteeism? I'm just trying to figure out if that's going to be an extra expense for, is it across the board or is it at the elementary level?
Well, yeah, I mean, it never is a predate as well. You should just kids not come to school, but it's not necessarily. A budgetary expense. Like we figured out how to do this this year and we will work with D bus next year saying. The only thing that's on this report that has a big budget impact, but it is in that number that I threw out there at the beginning would be the math. So the new math curriculum is somewhere in that hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollar range. We attributed that within the around eight fifty, eight hundred fifty thousand dollar. That differential of the town to the school. So that's in error. And we put it in there because, I mean. It's not negotiable to us. Just so you understand.
That's what I remembered it to be, a hundred thousand. So, but that's good to know that it's in that eight fifty, but that's also helpful. To, to spell that out. We're talking, you know, to the tribal budget and that.
Absolutely.
Um, so to have, to have to, um, Natasha's point to have that information because it is so essential. That's where it is great. That's, that's it. That's everything. So I've got a couple of questions for the literacy piece, but I'll save it also.
I would just say, you know, thank you for staying within the budget. I know that was hard and, um, with your staying expense. I guess I wish you could be more prepared like that. And social, emotional, just send out newsletters. I wish I could pitch some to you before that. Um, so if I have a wish list, it would be for us, we will do something substantial.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so.
Thank you.
I'll get to go first because, um, as, as you'll see through our, our, our four, four focal areas. Um, both literacy and math parallel one another very, very closely. Um, you know, between Green Meadow. And Fowler is that bridge and then from Fowler committed high school is that bridge. So I'll be talking about two different aspects of, you know, both, both parts of, um. Our, our focal areas, but in our literacy, you know, with, uh, grades four and five, our CKLA, um, big focus this year on a ninety minute literacy blocks. Um, in teaching with fidelity, using the CKLA curriculum. That's been going really great, continuing that, you know, next year moving forward. I want a lot of focus, um, working with our, some of our grant funding to have professional developments and some collaborative opportunities. For our teachers to continue growing professionally within that area. Um, then through our sixth to radar amplified, um, curriculum. Again, working on, you know, the focal points of increasing literacy skills in our middle school students and, um. You know, continuing with some professional development and resource, um, attainment from that, which we, you'll hear more about when we talk about literacy in a little while. Um, and then using map group, we're really excited about that. We're, we're oddly excited, or at least I am, to get to January. To see where our students are progressing, um, and to see how map growth is helping us to, um. Find those areas of support and strengths. Uh, math again, same thing, um, post December break, we'll be looking at some pilots or, or implementing some pilots. Um. Focusing on the K to five aspect, but then we're also looking at the six to eight aspect, whether it's the same program, because not all programs. Have a K to eight, um, span. So some are K to five, but some are K to eight. So I've been working, I have been working with our, our middle school grades. To identify some potential, um. Programs for that as well. Um. Parent guarding communication is also a big focal point, you know, using our continued weekly smores to highlight several aspects of each week. Everywhere from my long-winded blurbs that start every, every week to, um, focal points of key aspects of our curriculum areas. Um, this year we've been able to highlight s- some specific, um, aspects of CKLA. Um, thanks with help from Denise and, you know, we'll hear from her a little later as well, um, as well as. You know, celebrating learning, um, helping our, our. Parent and guardian community see what's happening within our school days and what's happening in our curriculum and seeing the collaboration between our students as they're learning. With our instructors and our teachers, um. Also, uh, Fowler's website is going to be a big focal point of mine. Um, when I started here in August, some of the first things I heard were. You know, we want some more, um, resources on the website. Um, so a lot of our smores and our websites can parallel one another. Um, a lot of our. Information was outdated there. So that'll be a really focal point for us moving forward. And lastly, our social emotional areas. Um, this year at Fowler, we implemented, um. I, it's not a program, a tool that, um, I developed a few years ago. In my former district, but it helps us track, um, some of our behaviors. Um, and what I mean by that, it helps us track our behaviors of. What the behaviors are, what grade, grade levels they are, where they're taking place within our, our day, recess yard bathrooms, cafeteria, classrooms, etc. Um, and it helps us really focus on, you know, our, the equitable practices that we have. So that we can make sure that we're putting particular supports and developing lessons and community meetings about certain areas where we're seeing. Some areas of deficiency. Um, we're also tracking both learning profiles, um. Whether a student is receiving, um, special education supports, they're on a five or four or just part of our general education program. We're tracking student race, um, and we're str- tracking grades and gender. So that way we can make sure that our, that. How we are responding, um, is equitable, uh, across all areas. Um. Our budget, we're looking for a, a level, um. Level funding or not level funding, but what am I looking for? Level service, thank you. So we're looking for level service. Um. We're continuing to work with our, our leadership team to see if that could happen, um, and we'll work creatively to, to problem solve that as we go.
Okay, um, I, I'm going to actually, um, start off with Beth. And then I'll come back to me.
Um, I think, I think that sounds great. I hope that's really good. Um, to see how, like, to make sure you know where things are happening and just saying that, that's really clever. Thank you for doing that. Um, and I guess my other question is, um, that we are implementing that and we're excited about that. Is there any of this really happening? Or something that will be able to be seen this month?
Will be able to. Okay, that'll be a priority because it's so important about that sort of referred back to not be, not having quality data. Not being able to assess the students in sort of a timely way, because you know, as an educator and test, isn't it? Uh, so we will be able to. Sure. We may actually get something else, but not better.
Mary?
Okay, uh, so yeah, I'm really intrigued by the, um, by the tracking. How does it work? Is it coming from, you know, is everybody put information into, um, the tool or, you know, like the teacher, seeing things? That our professionals are and the, you know, people working in the lunchroom and that. Can you explain it just a little bit?
Of course, thank you. That's a really good question. It's all of the above of what you asked. Um, so it's, it's a mobile form. Um, that has been coded. So it asks some basic questions, you know, the student name, grade, date, behavior. Whether the student was referred to the office or not, um, who the reporting staff member spoke to, um, to in the office. And whether the staff members requesting an administrator to speak with the students. Um, so this behavior. Recording or recording form is not designed for all punitive purposes. It's designed to, for any teacher that may see a problem. Um, or in, in direct with the students that, for instance, it could be something that's basically running down the hallway. Um, and, and what this form does is it then puts it into our spreadsheet, um, but it allows David and I to see real time. Because we got an email alert. So whether it's on our phone, we're walking down the hallways, or we're sitting in our office working on a project. Um, we're in a meeting, we can, we can see what's happening and we'll get an alert and determine if we need to respond right away. Um, but. What I think is the most important part of it is that once we. Work with the students, work with the staff members, it allows us to enter our response. Whether we contacted home by email, by phone, we didn't contact home because it might be a situation where that is not necessary. Um, or the teacher contacted home. Um, now I'll just put some very generic notes in there. And then up on the top of that, um, spreadsheet is, we, it's called the principal's menu. We highlight that row. The teacher's email is recorded in that when she, she or he fills out or they fill out that form. And we have the option to then pick the corresponding teachers that that student is connected to. For example, if one of the fifth graders connected to one particular teacher, um, so we can click that teacher. If it's a six, seven or eighth grade student, we have the team email address in there and we, we click the appropriate box. We go to the principal's, principal's menu and we click update. And what that does, it sends that information back to the teachers or teacher directly. So they get an email saying how we responded and whether we contact at home. If it's a do not send to the office, we, David and I fill out the other part of that spreadsheet, which is the gender. You know, the things I explained, um, so teachers don't see that part of it. That's just for us, um. And that allows, when, when I started here, one of the things that I received feedback on was the level of communications. And how we did that in a timely manner. And so what that does is it prevents that long line of educators that are waiting at our doors at the end of the day. Is that's the only time that they've had a moment to breathe. And it's like the deli, right? So it prevents that deli line. So they're getting that in real time. So they can, if they have to be right after school. They have the opportunity or want the opportunity to check their email when they get home, they can see how we responded throughout the day. So when they're starting that next day. They know whether a particular student had a hard time or not. And, you know, if it was a sixth grade student per se, all of their team will know from that student's receipt. The next morning or later on that day, they know that that student may be having a hard time and then they, they can kind of adjust their practice for that. Four. So we did. Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, it was a huge team effort to build it. In fact, I even tapped into some of my previous colleagues before, but hey, I gotta get this, I've been running here. Um, I think we got a really good system going right now. Uh, it's the fluser ironed out. It's working well. Um, what I do do with that as well, and I haven't done it yet this month, but I've been sending. period, um, almost monthly updates to staff, because as you all know, Google forms give you graphs. So I'm able to just copy and paste graphs of staff or seeing problem areas, you know, that in our, I don't want to say problems, but areas that might be having a higher um, incident, um, or what grade level, so it, it was working really well.
I'm really, um, interested to, you know, especially those students that might go through a difficult time, you know, and that kind of thing. Because the fact that it's not cumulative, like my theories that, you know, a couple of kids get kind of, um, called out as being trouble kids or something, not that the teachers want them or that's it, but it's not, it's not going there.
It's not going there. So when we, when I share that data out, the teachers aren't, are not seeing what students. Um, that's just internally for David and I. Um, we're a situation like some of that data may be used if we're having conferences or, um, you know, maybe an I T meeting or, um, you know, B B S T meeting, we can bring that data up to kind of see what patterns we're seeing on our particular student, but it's not something that's globally shared. Sure.
That's it.
My, my turn, okay. Uh, thank you very much for, for that and I'm uh, I'm gonna ask some similar questions that I did. Um, no, there's not a lot of budget numbers in here, uh, um, and it sounds like most of everything has been kind of baked into level service, so just whatever increases are there are just a continuation of maintaining what we're providing at this point. Um, are there certain aspects or funding areas that we would have liked to continue to pursue at Fowler? Um, that we, we know realistically that we're not able to do that. Um, whether that be academics or it could be, um, you know, materials, you know, technology or, um, thinking also, I know um, Bob has his little bit about facilities there, but you know, similarly, there are smart boards that we, we're seeing, you know, that we're just not able to repair or you know, turn over in a, as fast as we want, just kind of along those lines. I'm looking for some, some numbers of what we would, we had the money, what would that look like? And I
Sure. It, it, it's a loaded question, as you can imagine, and we're just starting to talk about a lot of these things. Um, so, some of the things that we're doing are, um, through certain funding, um, sources of funding. And so I don't know that it's necessarily a matter of a, a huge increase, we're still kind of working on that, trying to figure that out a little bit. Um, it's, it's more of, um, trying to allocate a little bit differently, if that makes sense. Um.
Yes.
Um, there's no technology needs here, um, that, that I, that I'm posing or have i- in my mind, a lot of things are, uh, already through my grant funding for professional development, it's already budgeted for our math to provide, you know, more materials and professional development there. Um, the, you know, my parent communication, guardian communication is just all just person power to, you know, get the information and find the time to update those things. Um, what, what, what I didn't mention at the beginning of my presentation is we're just about at the point of reconvening our, um, school council. It took a little while to, um, rebuild that, to develop, you know, to figure out what was happening before I got here to rebuild and get it up and running. I do have three staff members committed and I received three parent emails that are very, uh, excited to be on that committee. Um, so looking for a community member, uh, I'm hoping to be in full function in December. I know that took a little more time than I hoped it would take.
I, you know what, I, before the school committee, I was on the school council for, at Green Meadow for several years and I know that it is is a lot to juggle, um, with getting that right balance for staff and, and parent participation, the time, um, and then also just making, you know, everyone feel that their, their time is being used, you know, valuably to, you know, to put forward the effort as well. So, um, so I'm hoping much success to you and I can't wait to hear some updates on how, how that's going, um, and, and continuing on. I, I had one more question and really this is probably gonna be for, for each, and I didn't get a chance to ask Rob after I thought about it, but um, I know that, that we, we have a separate, we have a, a separate, you know, and some information about facilities, but particular to, to each building, I would really like to see what kind of planning we can do maybe over the summer to do some really low hanging fruit maintenance on what are we doing to like on the off seasons or kind of um, how are we coordinating with our director of facilities to say, you know what? I really would like these doors painted, like what are, are there summer projects that we can, you know, put, you know, some money towards that, again, uh, we have this conversation in our, in our town about maintaining stuff and I just want to make sure that, that those type of small things are just part of our, um, our culture and our, you know, like automatic, like we're planning this, we're gonna have, and I know that uh, there, the floors have been a really big undertaking over at Fowler, which is great. Um, they were sorely needed, but you know, just thinking about, is there a way we should set up a program of like, uh, schedule like doors, this? And how does that work with, with you all and coordinating with, um, with Rob about getting that done, if there are certain things that you want to prioritize in the off, off time?
So, so Bob does meet with us, Natasha, and he was by, matter of fact, today. But as the summer timing comes around, he will, um, go through, I will say, we had probably one of the best years since I've been here for cleaning wise, down at Green Meadow, I'm very impressed. They, they went through everything and, and really did a deep clean of the classrooms, uh, this summer. So I'm, I'm proud of that, uh, of what they do. Bob does come down, there's some, always some big items that they go on, whether it be, you know, roof fires or something like that, but he, he handles those, um, as, on an as needed basis. And he comes on down to us to make sure, as I said, he comes around and, and checks primarily on a week, every two weeks, uh, comes around, walks around with us to make sure, um, you know, uh, he's working with us in order to keep the grounds uh, clean. Uh, Alan has been marvelous. He's a, he's a hardworking gentleman and, uh, you know, so, uh, for, for him, he was down there today, making sure he's taking care of all the leaves in the area, cleaning up the area so it looks nice, uh, for the winter months. So we're getting there, but Bob does prioritize and goes around the buildings and takes a look at them and then comes around with us and uh, will meet with us as, as a year goes on and then really say, hey, summertime, what can we really focus on? In order to, one, two, as you said, painting, other things like that in order to spruce it up and make it really look nice every single year. So we, it's an ongoing conversation.
And, and the same thing, you know, Bob, um, and I met Bob and Sean a couple of weeks ago with David and, you know, we, we looked at some of our, you know, I like that reference of low hanging fruits, looked at some of our, you know, our bathrooms that could use a quick paint job that doesn't take a significant amount of time or finances. Um, that can be done perhaps during winter break or February vacation, you know, April vacation, so some of the smaller things that can, can happen. Um, I'm still learning a lot of people, but I can tell you what, the other day I was looking out my office window and there was a crew of people out in the ground, out the grounds, cleaning up the front of our, our building, which was fantastic. Um, I echo what Rob said and I had nothing to base it on, other than what staff were commenting on when they came back to school, that this was the best year they'd ever seen our building in the best condition, and I give our entire crew a lot of credit for that as well. Um, and, you know, it was very great, we were able to recognize them for that, one of our first staff meetings. Um, and so, you know, here at Fowler, again, talking about groups, talking about the H V A C system, that's all been, you know, talked about and it's an ongoing, um, process, um, so we're continually having those conversations as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You.
I think we're on to the high school. I, I see Liz online. Is Liz, is the floor yours?
Are you ready for mine?
Yes.
Uh, yep, it's all you.
I, um, have been meeting with the school council, my lead teachers and the SAC, the student advisory group uh, for, um, we're going into a year and four months now, I think. And we talk about budget quite frequently. If this were a different year, we were going to be excited to ask for some, um, staffing in fine arts. Um, we need classes, classes, if we could offer classes in our chorus, drama and more visual arts classes, they would be well subscribed, free teachers up. We are looking to free some teachers up to do some academic coaching.
Okay, do we, um, call it, are we okay?
Yeah. You might have had a blip.
All right, okay. Um, Liz, sorry, I don't know, are you, I, I, did you get cut off? I just want to make sure you.
I've been here all along and I can hear you. Did I get cut off?
No, I just want to make sure you were all, you finished, because I had that recording in progress happened, I just want to make sure that you were all set where you left off.
Yes, yes. We really aren't asking for anything new. We just want to do some juggling within what we have to make a better configuration for students.
Okay, Mary, I'll start with you.
Yeah, um, thank you very much, Liz, for, for that. Um, the, um, I guess my, my question, my overall question is, you, you're talking about, you know, reconfiguring the class, classes and that. On what history are you doing that? Is it only of the last couple of years that the students are, are going, you know, toward one direction? Or have there been, um, you know, seasoned teachers that have said, yeah, these classes haven't been well, um, you know, um, utilized for the last five years or something like that? I just want to make sure that we're making really good long-term decisions.
Well, the nice thing about budget neutral decisions is they don't always have to be super long-term decisions. We are doing both to answer your question. The, the lead teachers are some of the most experienced teachers in the building. And they and I look at enrollment trends in our classes and we can see that certain classes have sort of had their time and now are less popular. And we've all been just bowled over by how popular the business classes are. They have become, you know, the third, well, second most popular classes at school.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very, I'm thrilled about, um, that business side and the decor side and that, I think it's phenomenal. I just want to make sure that the other decisions are, you know, have been, and I'm sure that they have been well thought of.
Hopefully we can, um, you know, the budget situation does not get worse and we can remain fully staffed so that we are able to make changes and be flexible. If, say, a class that hasn't been popular the past few years, we start to get demand, we wouldn't remove the class from our program of studies so that we could track demand.
That's great. I appreciate that. And then, um, V H S program, how well utilized is that? Because that's another option, that if there are students that, you know, wanted to take like an extra class in English, that's not offered in that. And are we taking full advantage of that or is it working well?
Oh, yes, it's absolutely wonderful. We fill all of our seats. The students take such a wide variety of classes. Um, they take languages we don't offer, they take A P classes we don't offer. And if there are diehard, I, I don't want to give an example of a class, you know, and, and put it into history, but if there are students who are counting on a certain class and it happens not to be offered, it's a great, V H S is a great way to find two or three seats. We also offer a dual enrollment, Commonwealth dual enrollment with the local community and state colleges. And hopefully a new partnership with UMass Lowell to, um, offer some incredible dual enrollment classes. And if we become certified as innovation pathways, one of the benefits, benefits that comes is that the state through grants will pay the students dual enrollment tuition in those areas.
Thank you very much.
So it's very exciting.
Just out of curiosity, which, uh, dual enrollment classes do you offer now?
The students choose. It's, um, they can choose entry level classes from the community college and state college catalogs.
Do you have it limited at all? Is all open completely? Okay, that's so beautiful.
Yep, absolutely. We'll accept the credit if they can pass the class.
It's not, it doesn't replace like core classes that teachers in the building like to take, right? Like there, it's not like a threat to kids taking core courses inside the building, right?
It is not. It is, um, the one or two who might need to take something because of timing and schedule are not a threat to any unit A positions. And if we started to have a big cohort, as might be the case with the UMass Lowell, we would move to have the teacher become the teacher of record at both the college and the school.
Great. Um, so, uh, everything here looks fantastic. I like your wish list very much. I, you know, I think we all share that wish list, uh, so thank you for putting that together. Um, and I think that what you're doing to make sure that we can still meet student needs without having to add to the budget is clever. Um, I guess my one, uh, question as a M E B L S teacher is just, I hope that that the electives being cut are not the humanities electives, because I know that that's been a trend that's been happening in our country where people are kind of moving away from humanities and going more towards, um, you know, things like STEM. Uh, so I hope we're not, I hope we're not cutting up too many electives that are things that we would like, for example, people using things like ethics classes and those things like, you know, law classes and things like that, creative writing classes, so hopefully not things like that. But that's just from experience.
I can't written that now.
We do need though, I think America has moved away from them a little, you know, a little recently and we're moving back.
And I just, I, I'm just one. Sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead, Brian.
One comment that, um, for years, um, it, it seemed as though we were cutting every time that there was a pass, Brian, every time there was a cut, it was to the high school. Because you, you know, Green Meadow and the middle school there, you just have to have the core. And at the high school, there's just more of a breadth of, of classes to have. And I don't, it took us a very long time to get the high school to where it is now. I do not want to go backwards on that. So just a general comment, um, that we finally, I finally feel as though we, we're getting the high school back to, um, a really good, um, you know, selection of, of courses, so. Keep that active.
Well, it's alignment, it's really the alignment too, right? It took a lot of, like, just from the middle school to the high school. Um, you know, it doesn't happen overnight. It comes with staff and, you know, curriculum and classes, so think to that point, sometimes there's the short-term cuts happen, but the long-term impact to repair can take years to get back. Um, so that's a good point, Mary. Thanks for bringing that up. Um, I had, um, hmm, maybe three questions for you. One is looking, you mentioned something about the, the classes that you're looking to, to have a more inclusive. Can you give an example of, of that type of, I've heard some of that discussion and I, I don't want to make assumptions of what I'm interpreting that to be, but where might be focusing more on core classes that are more inclusive. Can you be more specific to what that might look like?
Well, it's, it certainly is our core classes that need to be more inclusive. But in addition, it, all of these pathways and our chapter seventy-four need to be more inclusive as well. We're just seeing students in general with a wider array of skill sets as they come to us. Everyone knows that the literacy of American students is not what it was ten or fifteen years ago. They need more, um, tiered support in literacy, not only in elementary and middle school, but also as they approach difficult subjects such as high school level biology or American history that have big textbooks with lots of vocabulary. There's a real skill set to helping a wide variety of students take those courses. The same is true of a communications class where there's an anticipation of quick reading and quick reacting. The students need help in order to all be included. The students need help in order to all be included. And we are not willing to run programs that aren't for all of our students. I think that the most important thing we can do as a school is, especially as a small school, is make sure that every single student, all means all, has a chance to experience the programs, the courses, the pathways in an authentic way with the help that they need. And that is really, really hard for a classroom teacher to pull off without coaching and support.
Yes, thank you for, for clarifying that. I, I had, um, a conversation with a parent recently about, um, it's high school level classes specific to, which I had not really heard much about, but linguistics. And how it has helped some, some children or some kids who have like language-based, um, because there's a lot of focus on the, the phonetics and, and that sometimes do get lost if they're having language-based, you know, learning disabilities. And as they're getting older and the subject matter, kind of what you're saying, the subject matter has gotten, you know, harder because the, the content of the material is just more words that linguistics has helped some of, some, some of, some kids, um, as an accompanying offering in high school, because it really focuses on that, that language and articulation and more than just as a, as a separate learning, but how they're communicating with the world and how you're pronouncing things that maybe they didn't capture in their, um, middle school or elementary school as much. So I just thought that was really interesting feedback that I heard recently and I, I don't know if, um, the high school offers, um, a linguistics class in any way, or if that has been an experience, but I just wanted to share that with you. Um, but from a budgetary perspective, there was two things. I know last year, the, uh, athletic trainer was something that everyone was really wanting to pursue. And I know that there was the cost associated with that. And I've heard feedback about, um, you know, whether we can or cannot do that. And I, and I don't know, maybe this is more of a Brian question. Um, but that is something that I think at one point, I, I think we might want to just have a, a response to when we have a, a larger school committee, our budget on, on why we can or cannot, um, look towards funding an athletic trainer. And you know, what the impact of that is, the pros and the cons, just to kind of carry that conversation forward. Because there are safety implications there and it does impact, um, absenteeism for students. And a lot of those components that we're talking about, which are really important about keeping kids healthy and in school. Um, athletic trainers are part of that, um, in many ways, when we have a student body who has a lot of athletes. Um, and plays a lot of different sports all through the year. We have many athletes who are three sport players, you know? And, and so I think that's just a consideration. And so the other part really is, I was, I wanted to ask, Mary, I know is really an advocate for this oftentimes, but I haven't heard much. Is the, the afternoon, an afternoon bus? I know when we talk about, um, absenteeism and how students are, you know, who are maybe from, you know, families that don't have a lot, they may have, they may be the ones that they're, you know, relying on themselves to maybe could be raising themselves or they're a single-family households and they, um, you know, need help more after school, um, and but they don't have transportation to get home, you know, and so they miss those oppor- education opportunities and, you know, maybe opportunities for credit. Has there been conversation about how, um, oh, Brian's raising his hand on that one?
I could, yes, Brian. Budgetary issue, that's, if you look at the transportation across the state, that's a statewide issue that there aren't enough buses for bus drivers. For after school, we've been advocating B bus for an extra bus, a wait bus for about a year and a half now, and they would be glad to apply. They would be glad to charter, but yeah, they would be glad to provide it. They don't have pride. And they are no different than NRT and any of the other companies. So it's a great point. Nobody would disagree with it. And I think that that's the trouble is that there really aren't enough all black bus drivers available right now.
So if we had, so it's not a funding issue from what, what I'm hearing from you is that we would, if the opportunity presents itself, we would absolutely fund it. It's just a matter of not having the services or vendor available to provide that on an ongoing basis. Is that what I'm understanding? Okay, what does that look like from a dollar perspective?
I would have, I mean, I would want to say, it's been probably several months to a year since we talked with Sandra, because I want to.
Okay.
How much it costs.
Right. Okay, I just would like to make sure that that continues to be part of our, I, I know it is, but just we talk about all the things that we want to work on, that is a critical part of it, is how do we get students to engage more, um, and act their curriculum if they're not able to get, if they miss time or whatever that might be. Um, and, and maybe stay after a day. Um, even if it's not every day, you know, like, you know, is there a certain amount of days that might, you know, incrementally work? Um, so I don't know, we just, I, it is something that it's an equity thing as well, um, that I, I really think is, I wish we had a better solution for, but thanks for, for continuing to try to work through that. Uh, Liz, I don't, I don't have any other questions. I just want to thank you and I, the other part with the athletic trainer, I think will be more of a Brian conversation, but anything that you can share on that, um, please feel free.
The, the principals in the league and in the MIAA are in support of at least part-time athletic trainers at every school. However, there is a tremendous shortage of professionals in that field. So even schools that post are having trouble finding those who will work. Um, I think when you talk to Brian and Mr. Aria, they will, um, you know, share our support, but we're talking extremely expensive proposition to be able to actually land one. And it's a complicated, complicated topic. It would reduce injury to have an athletic trainer.
That's the part that I, you know, I know we keep talking about dollars and stuff, but there's this other component of health and safety, um, that is paramount to the conversation. And it's just not about, you know, it is dollars, it costs money, but it's also someone. It's a safety aspect that I think, you know, it's tough to just kind of dismiss. So thank you for, for that update.
You're very welcome. Thank you for having me.
Yep. All right. Thank you. And then Brian, I know that you, there's a couple of other, did you want to speak to the?
Um, Jeff, was Jeff? Well, Jeff go first and I'll, then I can take over for the people that aren't present online.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. As far as the FY twenty-five, the student services budget, I'm not, I'm not looking to, there's no planned increases in the budget lines or staffing. Um, but to be honest with you, we have a number of students who move into Maynard, families move into Maynard, which is great. Sometimes some of those students have significant needs. So even though there may not be a budget request initially, things do occur during the year where students move in, student move out, and so that the budget is, uh, it is not static in that what we ask for now is going to be what we might need during the year. And that's where we use our circuit breaker account to address any unforeseen, um, cost increases. What I'm trying to do is within the existing budget is make sure we're maintaining our nursing and counseling ratios at each school. Um, so that's something I'm working on with the principals as well as, uh, with Wayne and Brian. Uh, just to make sure we can maintain those levels and that means I may have to cut back on some other lines. Um, so that needs to be done just very, very strategically. So that, that's where I'm at at this point. Just trying to maintain, just trying to maintain the level of service we've always had.
Okay. Um, I guess, Mary, I'll, if you have any questions, I'll start with you.
Yeah, my, um, I guess my overall concern is the increase in the out-of-district tuition. Um, i- is it students or is it this, the cost per student that's increasing?
Well, every year the, the state allows an increase in the, in the tuitions. Sometimes it's as low as a three or four percent is probably the, the lowest I've seen over the, over the years. This past year, they allowed private schools to bump up by fourteen percent. And so we are able to absorb a lot of that through our revolving account, but that, that account becomes lower and lower as that number keeps going higher and higher. Um, what we try to do is make sure our in-district programs are strong enough so students aren't being referred out. I mean, even our Oasis program has been, uh, quite a resource for students with tremendous needs. And that's kept our referrals out and kept students in with their, with their peers, their non-disabled peers. Uh, but there are some times where the level of complexity in a student needs requires more than what we can provide effectively. So that's where you start seeing some referrals out. And then, and there's, there's some, we've had some students move in, especially at the high school level with some very, very significant needs who are already out of district. So then you're just, you're just, you're, you're pick, you're continuing with the, the level of services they had before, which go, which includes the tab, the cost for doing that.
I appreciate especially the, um, the increase of Natasha and I around the budget subcommittee. It's helpful for us to know that, you know, we don't have control over the tuitions and the fact that there's an increase in one year of fourteen percent. So thank you for that, Jeff. That's it.
Okay.
Elizabeth?
Uh, no, I have no questions. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. And, um, I know that the fourteen percent was something that, you know, we, we talked about last year. It was kind of planned based on that, the notice from the state. Unfortunately, it doesn't really make a difference in our allocation, um, which is, you know, unfortunate, there's only so much money available there. Um, Jeff, I was wondering with the, um, with the expansion of the Tiger program that we had, um, was it maybe like two years now or two or three years that we've, um, at, it's at two schools now, so it's at the elementary school, right, and middle school? Are we seeing us, um, referrals? Are we, are we, do we feel like we're able to support more in district? And I guess when I look at like that ratio that Desi has where they have, you know, inclusion, partial inclusion, um, um, full inclusion or out of district. I know that we, for, for years, we've been on the high end of the percentage for out of inclu- or out of district, but then really low for, you know, programming and a lot of it's just for our small district. Do you feel like we're getting closer to closing that gap?
Well, and, and when you look at those ratios, and I, and I do look at those from, from time to time, then I compared us with surrounding districts. We are similar in our percentage of students that's out of districts. Reality is, we, we can't control who, who moves in and moves out. We can only control what, what services we provide here. And when we did add additional staff at the high school and at Green Meadow to serve a more, um, involved uh, population that's moving in, I believe they have been very successful. But that also changes over time depending on what the kids are presenting to us. I think if you ask the, the special ed teachers and, and our speech language pathologists, they will identify and preschool teachers, wow, the students coming in, their, their needs are so much greater than what they have been before. So in response, they've tried to do more pu- push-in work at the kindergarten and pre-K levels. Um, and I don't know if this will be a question from anybody, you know, if I, if I could ask for anything and had unlimited money, I would have more preschool programs. I would have more intensive, um, general ed, uh, classrooms focusing on literacy, because if we get it early enough, then perhaps by the time the students get to Liz, we wouldn't be looking to hire someone who's got more of a, of a reading background within special ed. Um, I think it has helped in keeping those students in district. Um, I think if we spoke with the parents, I, I believe they would say, we, we love the idea of having our students stay with their, with their peers, disabled or non-disabled, because these are the kids they've grown up with. Um, I think overall it's been positive. That's just anecdotal. Um, you can look at the trends and you can see our, the ratios are getting more consistent with the state. But then again, this is Maynard. We, we're, we're not trying to match the state percentages, right? We have our own unique profile and, and our patterns of supporting the kids. I do think it's, 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 it's going in a positive direction, but it's not where I'd like to see it. I, I, I wish no kids had to go out.
Can, um, can you, I know that we've had this year an unanticipated, and I know this is a separate, um, conversation, but as far as the transportation piece where our collaborative wasn't able to, we had absorbed some transportation funding. Do we anticipate that being, um, something that we'll have to plan on in future fiscal years as well as transportation becomes a harder, um, service to, to fund?
What, what was, what, what was frustrating this year for Rhonda and I was that we found out late.
Right.
So we found out late that, wait a minute, you can't provide transportation for this student, this student, this student? So then we had to go out and then contract out at an extreme, a, a much higher cost. We know better than just to assume that everything is going to be like a year before. So we'll be finding out more with the summer. Can I predict that they'll have more drivers? Um, with their existing, um, transportation company? I hope so. I, I would suggest we prepare for that though, that it might just be.
This was out with Assavet, was this, was this Assavet Valley Collaborative?
Yes, and they, and they use, and they use Vanpool, and I, I've been familiar with Vanpool for quite some time. It was very unusual for them not to keep us informed on what was going on. And then for us to now have to go out and, and we have to provide the transportation. You can't go to a family and say, sorry, we can't provide transportation for your extremely needy child. I don't anticipate we're going to be surprised next year, but that doesn't guarantee that we wouldn't have to look towards other agencies for transportation.
Okay. Um, yeah, and then that's the, the unforeseen aspect there. Um, last question, I guess, from, as it relates to the staffing levels for, um, as you're assessing like the, the, the adjustment counselors and the, the nurses, and I know some of that is, has been shifted from the SRA funds that we've gotten away from. But what other, um, data are we using to inform like that need? Because I know it's a kind of a changing, you know, dynamic is, is the, like the nursing, for instance? Um, do we see more, more children who are needing medication, um, delivery that they are needing more nurse intervention than historically? And that's why that's a service. I've, I've heard some of that in, in other districts and I, I don't know if that's what we're seeing in, in Maynard as well?
Yeah, Natasha, that, that, that's part of it, you know, ha- there's some direct health needs that need to be addressed with the students. And while you're providing those direct services to those students, you know, have other kids still coming in with, with issues. Um, there's also a requirement that the nurses have to document that day the number of kids that they have seen and what has occurred. Um, they try to do that while through the day when things quiet down, but I'll invite anybody over to, I'll invite anyone on school committee over to Green Meadow and just see the volume of the littles coming in and the level of support they need. And then, you know, Fowler has their volume of kids coming in that have a slightly different need. And then high school, you could have a, a multitude of, of different needs going into the nurse's office. Um, I think we're in much better shape than we were during the COVID times. Uh, this is, this is a sharp group of all certified RNs. Our ratio was supposed to be one RN for every two hundred and fifty students up to five hundred, so our ratio is good. Our ratio is where it needs to be. Um, and as far as the, the counseling and school adjustment counselors, uh, the ratio there is, should be from one to two, to two hundred and fifty students, which I think is incredible high, but that's, that's the recommendation from the Mass Association of School Counselors. We're in very good shape that way. Um, especially if I can keep figuring out a way to cover the school adjustment counselor, Aaron, who's at Green Meadow. And you heard from Rob about how great it is that Julie Danforth is able to do push-in work for SEL. Well, you know what? If we don't have that third counselor, that pushing's not happening because now Julie's going to have to do a lot of the direct work, the social work and direct counseling work with the students. Um, you just, you just need to be careful. When, when you start messing around, i- if the kids are not socially mostly ready to, to learn, you could have all the great interventions you want in curriculum and in the gen ed classroom. They won't be available for it. So that, that's an area that we're, we're looking at, uh, very carefully to make sure we can cover in some way.
And I, 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 I know that we had students, um, from the high school. And I, 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 I know that we had students, um, from the high school, Liam, particular, last time he, he spoke about at the high school, just having that extra level of, of counseling, um, there, how critical that the students have been, um, excited for that and how much that's been helping them. So clearly, um, there's no belief that we're overstaffed in the counseling department by any means. Um, I think it's just the needs, whatever the, whatever that norm is, um, uh, it's, it's certainly outdated because the needs of the kids, um.
Yeah, very outdated.
It's, yeah, yeah, I think it's, you, you, it's, you can't be reactive, you have to be prepared. And I think that's the, 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 the part that maybe everyone needs to understand. It's not something that you could just pick, oh, I'm just gonna pull a counselor in, because we just need a whole bunch right now. It's, it's, you need to have that in place already, that kind of support. So.
And we, and we have an outstanding certified train crew.
Yeah. Um, I don't have any other questions, um, except for, uh, well, just what I asked, but I, I appreciate, um, your information and attendings tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Are you going to, yeah, are you gonna, Brian, are you gonna go over, um, Bob's?
I'll go over Bob and Adam really briefly, since they're not here next. Anyway, and Bob, majority of Bob actually comes in the form of capital requests that you've all gotten. So this is kind of the additional items staying within our budget. Um, at Green Meadow, really the focus is on the courtyard and maintaining the building at a minimum cost, uh, building project that has, um, and Fowler, the focus is still on floors and roofs. Um, there are still classrooms that the tiles, the adhesive is giving off or trying to be reduced, uh, be replaced. Um, the really, really, um, the classrooms that were really in rough shape were handled last summer, so he's trying to be more proactive if possible within the budget and look at the classroom before they get to that point, we have to take all the tiles up, but to replace them over a break, some of them over a winter break, February break, et cetera, or even some. Um, also including the outside of the building and continuing to train the custodians on the HVAC maintenance at the building. In terms of the high school, there, it's very similar, it has to do with some of it, training on the HVAC equipment and training on the automated building system, because the newer buildings are much more computer operated and they're relatively complicated. I could know how to do that, that stuff happen, train it to make it happen. Uh, overall, the high school is actually in really good shape, we're fortunate. And we'll continue to maintain it the way that we have. And we're lucky that we have a half-time brownsperson, really, I, I can see the difference now compared to years when that position hasn't been able to be funded, um, just in terms of leaves and grass. And overall, if you look at the front of Fowler, for example, he power washed in different areas on different buildings that are going to take care of. So that's where his focuses are outside of capital requests, which are really, if you remember the capital requests are the HVAC, um, roofs, lighting, some of the other bigger projects, bigger dollars.
Um, Mary, did you have anything on this?
A couple of comments, um, if, if, if you were here, um, and I, I always come to, I guess, my, my professional background of like, if you've got a condominium development, for instance, they do like a ten-year or fifteen-year, um, long-term schedule, you know, a year five to four, and then you, your ten score, and then you budget, or you, at least you know what's coming down the pipe and that. Um, I would love to see that long term rather than, you know, year to year for, for what we're looking at. So that if it's not here, so that we can, we can just have an understanding again, so that we can talk to the powers that be, um, about that. And then the other thing that I talked to him a couple of times about, and I know he's been swamped, is, um, he's doing a really good job of, um, of training the custodians to, you know, and how to maintain things, saving us money by having, um, other people come in, other contractors, but to have a manual in place to say each of the things that, you know, HVAC system, this is the, the normal maintenance, then, you know, four times a year to do this or, or the different systems and that. So I just wanted to ask how he's doing with that, because I know I've asked him a couple of times about that. So again, you know, the idea is who's ever in the position, they can just pick it, pick it up and, and go with, um, you know, what's already right. So just those two things.
I think you'll have both with the next couple of weeks, if you can work this.
Beth? Okay, um, the only thing that I would actually want, I know this came up once about, we don't use school dude anymore. And that was the thing, when there was a bait, a maintenance issue, um, but I think there's a clear need for some type of systematic. Um, how do you report system? Like, so if I, someone wanted to know, and the example that I'm thinking of is that, that broken light that was hanging in Fowler, an emergency light for a long period of time, that I know was on an inspection report. Um, how does that get reported? You know, what is the process for that? I, what I want us to get away from is kind of like, somebody sees, it's like, where's the, where's the process? So I would look maybe to, to Rob and, you know, in, in putting forward, suggesting some type of process across the board that, um, that can be implemented for reporting and so that if anyone wants to look at the maintenance of a particular area or whatever, something was done, it's systematically easy to access. Um, right now, I think it's like, you just kind of, I don't know, every school might be a little different from, from what I've heard and how they, they get some of those tasks done. So from a maintenance perspective, I, I don't know if we can work towards some more systematic way that, um, you can report these things and they're tracked and logged a little bit. Um, just so we can kind of keep on top of, you know, those things a little bit more. Cause I mean, at one point, it might not be Robert anymore, it might not be the same principles here anymore, you know? And we need to have that history on, um, whoever can step in, any particular role is able to see, you know, what, what's happened in a particular area from a maintenance perspective. So is that something that you've heard any conversations about at all, Brian, or?
I don't think anybody's complained about that, but we could easily build a Google form that does what you're talking about. Nobody used schools and it has price tag to it. It's not a difficult system to use, but my understanding was nobody actually used it. So it made no sense to continue to pay for a system that wasn't in use. We could build something very simple, before that would track that.
Yeah, and, and I'm not definitely looking for something that we have to expend, so since we don't have that, exactly. Maybe it's a Google, a Google form, I have no idea, right? And you have, it goes to a sheet, you know, it's something, there's so much different technology now. I just think that it would be great to have some type of systematic way across the board that people can report things and then it goes to requests, go to him or whatever, and he can track it and it starts building a better history. Um, but yes, to your point, usable, functional, um, doesn't cost an arm and a leg to, to maintain a license for if, if we don't need to.
Certainly.
Um, and then, yeah. And then the other, um, the other question, I guess I would, well, this is more feedback, I think we talked about me in our budget subcommittee meeting, but I think it's worthy of mentioning as we talk about the fields and the bleacher project, um, planning for restroom and what that maintenance and care with a restroom on the field would look like, because that would be, I'm guessing FY twenty-five, that we would need to bake into our budget on, you know, maintenance and all that. So just that it's on his radar or if it's on your radar, however that's working, but I think that's going to be hitting the FY twenty-five, correct? That's the plan?
If all goes well.
If all goes well, yes. Um, so I just want to make sure that, that, that part is, you know, once we build it, it's the care of how are we caring for it and, and whose responsibility and all that gets flushed out. Okay, that's all I have for, for that. You're going to Adam?
Great. Adam, uh, the, he had a modest request of an additional uh, fourteen thousand dollars to address, to address increases in the cost of existing subscription services uh, that, and that were added during COVID. We built that into the budget for FY twenty-five. The increase will be the first, um, IT budget increase in several years despite the significant quantity and technology as well as increasing use of digital learning. Uh, for example, the past three years, many of our schools have increased five hundred, fifteen hundred Chromebooks and added the next generation student information system. Uh, you should be, you can pay yourself a lot for that, because that'll look for student operating systems. Uh, are you looking at Aspen is one of the ones that they are always looking at and it's whether or not they've decided to go with that. Um, but it's been working well for us, we pulled it out well. Um, Adam's worked really hard, his team has, we've had some people on special projects supporting Aspen. Um, in addition, it's tripled our network bandwidth to the common digital assessment, which is the math world, which we want to maintain and will maintain. So I give them credit, they've worked hard, they've been able to achieve this without budget expansion by really maximizing non-budget sources of capital funds, uh, and they have some grants and federal programs such as E-Rate, Emergency Connectivity Fund, and we use the care as money as.
Um, Beth, anything?
Uh, yeah, so we've been on the fantasy briefly, he, he uncovered that written down in the timing community.
No, we added it into our.
And anything for the, for the girls?
Yes.
All right, yeah. Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, that's, we're doing some progress, right? What, what can we do?
That's what we support. I can't say it off.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Mary?
Yeah, I just, um, don't know how we cover the cost of the Chromebooks here after the year, you know, you've got the new students coming up and, um, it just looks as though fourteen thousand doesn't do it, so, you know, you know, we've got the green.
Oh, yes.
But yes, yeah, we need to class that comes up. I know, you know, we could sell, you know, Chromebooks to the students that are graduating, but at a fraction. So I, I would really like to understand how, sure, how come that costs, so that's it.
And I actually had a, a similar question too. I know that a lot of, um, you know, universities have transitioned to leasing, um, programs when it comes to their, um, computer devices where they're like on a three-year cycle and then they just, so they don't own it, they just, you know, it'll get refreshed. And I don't know if that's, as we continue to use as many Chromebooks as we have now, is, is, is there a cost analysis to, um, really buying them outright versus maybe a lease? Cause that's also a lot of, um, we don't, we, we have to get rid of them somewhere, right? It's just, you know, how do we, what happens when we have all of them and we don't? Is there, where do we store them? Do we recycle them? You know, all that is on us to, to figure out. So I don't know, I don't know if we would get like a credit or I don't know what that looks like, but as we've expanded our need for it, maybe that would be a question. Um, I'd want to hear more about fiscally, what would the difference in the nexus be from, you know, leasing program versus outright buying and what's the benefit for either or?
Sure, I'll follow and give that again.
Okay. And I know at one point, um, Chuck had mentioned this and I, and I, it was referenced also is, is about the, the subscriptions and we, we've used and that they were, they were cutting some, the Chuck talked more about like the curriculum ones. And we were, it wasn't going to be a huge offset, but I'm just wondering if, if at some point we could get kind of like an inventory? I would really like to see, what are all the subscriptions we, we have at an annual that are annual subscriptions? Are they, you know, and what their primary purpose is for? Um, I see them on like warrants and I make certain assumptions on my, some of them I know, but I know that there's one that we stop using now, we start using. So if that could be something that we can get provided, you know, separately offline, just as a reference, like, you know, and is that, is that a number that we're, we're tracking every year? Like we're growing in total, all of our licenses that we do? Are they going up at a certain amount? Is it for the same amount, the same licenses and they're just increasing the costs, you know, three, five percent more? Or is it that we're, we're needing to add more for, for purposes as well?
Yeah, I'll follow on that.
Okay, great. That's all I have.
Just a time check, we're forty-five minutes over.
Okay. Anything else? Nope. All right, so next is the literacy update.
We have a lot of people here to share about literacy.
Great.
We have Principal Rulo, Assistant Principal Lindgren, uh, Peter Nelson, and Principal Kitty. In whatever order they decide to go, I lose control of this for a minute.
Um, just a very quick one, I want to thank everybody for having us. This is an update on our literacy program. We've been running our program for the last several years. And again, this is, this Karen will be talking about the workups with Instruction Partners and our professional development there. I will give a brief update on the vertical assessment and then we'll talk about our K to literacy in our K to next steps. Uh, Keith in Indonesia will be talking about the three to five literacy updates and steps that take place for that. And then they will go on to the grade six brewing. But thank you again.
All right. Uh, well, thank you for having us all. I'm starting, um, update on our work with instruction partners. Um, so this was a, this work with instruction partners came out of a grant that was created by Charles Cabran in East Austin. So shout out to them for helping to bring this to Maynard. Our work started last spring. Um, it was a Jesse Grant, we have had the opportunity for both administrators and staff to work with Heather Jents and Kelsey Groban from Instruction Partners. Uh, last spring, we had a team, an implementation team made up of teachers in grades three, four and five, some special educators and members of leadership team. We worked to, um, create a landscape analysis plan for implementing the new curriculum resources in grades three, four and five. Part of that work included, um, starting to develop a Maynard Public Schools vision of literacy instruction. And that work to create our mission was continued into the fall. Um, and working to create our landscape and landscape analysis. Uh, their teacher feedback was included in that work, student feedback was included in that work. Uh, our focus areas included curriculum pacing, curriculum instructional times, student standard agency and differentiation in the curriculum. Um, we spoke last spring at the work that was done in scheduling so that we could increase the amount of time that each grade level had dedicated to literacy instruction. For example, in grade three, they've been allocated a hundred and twenty minutes of literacy instruction a day to meet the requirements of the CKLA curriculum. And that has happened in our scheduling, in Fowler, we allocated ninety minutes for fourth and fifth grade, which is also in alignment with the curriculum. Um, we've also talked a lot about, um, work that's happening within classrooms to build student agency and have them be, um, more active learners. Uh, our students are reporting a lot of positive engagement, they're really enjoying the curriculum. Um, and they are, uh, their feedback last year was that they really wanted to do more. And so our teachers worked really hard, people worked over the summer to create pacing guides. Um, they've been really sticking to those pacing guides, moving students through the curriculum at an appropriate rate based on the recommendations from CKLA and, um, continue to build, you know, for keeping up with that. And an ongoing effort in terms of differentiation and working with bringing in multilingual staff as well as special education staff, um, to really look at how we can take this resource to differentiate for others. Uh, professional development for teachers in grades three through five has also been a part of this work. Um, implementation partners came or instructional, instruction partners came to Maynard in August and did a one-day workshop for the leadership team and then two days for teachers in grades three, four and five. And the feedback from staff was important around that work that they did, um, with Heather Jensen in particular. And then Heather did a site visit in September as a follow-up to a site visit she did in the spring to really look at the ways that our CKLA curriculum is being implemented in classrooms. And then she is, that feedback for her report to Desi as well as the district so that we can make sure that we are fully implementing and maintaining alignment.
It, it has been very, very important as we continue to grow, um, that our vertical assessment is aligned. And this is an assessment that's aligned of from the early grades all the way through into the high school. So it's, it's been something that we've been working on. Obviously, we have the map growth, uh, that there was a training that was took place in August for all the staff. Uh, from there is. Uh, from there is students in grades one through ten were assessed using that map growth. And um, then there was the opportunity is we will have at the carriage move and caregivers will get that. Information in February. The reason for February is so we have two data points. So we're able to have a growth understanding. We can be able to uh, send that and show that to parents. By just doing the one data point, it wouldn't have really told us as much. We want to see this as a growth. Students in K to one have been assessed using that early bird literacy. And um, in September and October, um, I am very proud to say is. Then that's a recommended along with Dibels eight is recommended from the Department of Education. We've been using it for several years now. So we have been ahead of the game there. So congratulations to everybody for bringing that in early and uh, using that uh, data. Students in grades two to five are using the Dibels eight in the maze. And then the families, the caregivers who have been notified of the assessments. And then they receive that information if the children are significantly below benchmark, but we use that information. To help work on our our teaching strategies and to work with our group of students. So that is the vertical assessment alignment. Again, it goes from early education all the way through high.
Thanks for me back. All right, so K two literacy update. Um, one of the things that we spoke about. Last rain was that in analyzing our early bird data and really thinking about um, evidence-based practices and instruction. Our teachers were noting through the work done with your early bird literacy specialists that there seemed to be a disconnect between. What we really needed students to be able to do for stand for the standards and what they needed to be readers. Uh, and what we were providing them through our foundations curriculum. Their lack didn't match the pacing was too slow. Um, and our students really were not carrying over those skills to decoding and encoding to read and write. So um, we reached out to other districts, did some research um, and decided that we would. Implement or pilot the from phonics to reading program. Uh, and so we've done that in kindergarten and grade one. As Rob said earlier, the plan is to that integrate to next year. Um, so far, the curriculum has been really comprehensive and includes human awareness, explicit phonics instruction and a focus on whole. Uh, the scope and sequence that a much faster piece than foundations and brings in a lot of necessary skills. In a timely manner so that students are able to actually implement them and use them um, as they're progressing through text. Uh, the other really fantastic thing about the phonics reading program, each unit, each week of instruction. Includes a decodable text within the curriculum that all students have access to. Um, and it follows a five-day lesson sequence until they're reading it multiple times. And then the books are either going into their book bins or being sent home. So students share what they can read with their families. Um, and so that's really what we were looking for is that direct um, transfer of skills. Um, students are benefiting from the structure and systematic presentation of the skills. And most importantly, students are being really highly. At the work. And you can see that as you're walking around through classrooms, they feel really confident. They're excited to share what they're working on. Uh, the program does have the focus on decoding, but also encoding. And so they're they're applying skills that they're working on to dictation and writing and involvement and then repeat what they're working on. So. Overall, it's been um, it's been a great implementation process, you know, all new curriculum. Requires a lot of work. Teachers engaged in professional development last June. Um, and we're scheduled to meet with the literacy specialist for phonics to reading again in December. And then again, um, later in May, just to continue that development and do this need work for our teaching team. As they live to implement it. Um, all classes in kindergarten and grade two are transitioning from word wall-based practices. To sound wall-based practices. And this is the important piece here is that. A word wall um, practice that's been in place for probably about twenty, twenty-five years. It doesn't correlate with the sounds and the phonies that. Words are actually required. A sound while actually helps students understand that that. The sound, the phone is making, they're looking at the shape that their mouth is speaking, but they're saying those sounds and then they're thinking about how words. Are categorized based on their sounds. So for example, in the past, the word no, like I know. But that's not what kids know, understand, or look for. Now it's actually under the N sound, the N sound. Uh, and then kids are specifically explicitly talk about the cake. So, um, and then our small group instruction continues to be skills-based and informed by data. Um, so as Rob mentioned, we're using early bird and kindergarten in first grade. This year we've used Dibels using M class from Amplify. Both of those uh, platforms also produce skills-based recommendations. Uh, they'll provide groupings for of students for teachers so that you're not looking at a reading level. Looking at a particular skill that a child needs to um. Master so that they can then move on through other skills that are for groups for their reading. Uh, these these groups are very fluid because it can depend on the skill, the specific skill that the child needs. Um, and then we have been using Lexia four or five, which in our first and second grades specifically, but also as intervention. In grade three and Lexi has been used this year as a progress monitoring tool. We've worked closely with the literacy specialist from Lexia. To be able to look at that data, to look at the instructional practice recommendations. Uh, and use it as a predictor for other layers of intervention students might achieve. As we head towards our next benchmark assessment in January using macro. So. Lots of work happening in K through two and it's been really exciting.
Our next steps uh, for the K to two is we will continue with our professional development as Karen noted. Is the idea from Lexia learning and that idea about phonics reading to continue with the. For the are now with our way of literacy specialists, but we'll be working with those. Um, we want to thank again, we have seven staff members through the generosity of the MDF. Is they wrote a grant and they are receiving structured literacy and small group instruction. Uh, Karen is also partaking in that and then so we bring it back into the school. And it's information in learning they can use right away, which has been very, very beneficial. We will continue in developing with our ELA coaches. This is a a been a a great. Aspect of the grade metal and they work directly with the grade level teams in order to work on development and especially in the area of pacing guides. Making sure we're supposed to be doing and keep so all kids are are learning what they need to do. Um, curricular resources. Again, we will talk about the phonics to reading and that is great tool we adopting that. And then Lexicor is used for skill development. Finally, as we do is collaboration. Uh, we focus on meeting the needs of all the students, all the grade level teams, all the multilingual teachers, special education ELA coaches meet weekly. Through the common uh, plan. Without those ELA coaches, I mean, that may be a great. Part of what we're doing and as we move forward at the degree of school, moving of the kids up to uh, Fowler and then of course. The endpoint to the ice. So thank you for that.
Forget my.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, sorry. No, that's okay. Go ahead.
I just had to give my casual attire. I just came from nature's class classroom. I'm there for the week, so I just.
Thank you. Thank you for joining.
Thank you for having me. So the three five literacy update. Um. We're in year two of our implementation process for CKLA and Caminos in grades three, five. Um, all teachers are implementing the programs with fidelity and this year the emphasis is. Really on pacing, trying to make sure that they're able to um, teach more lessons than the first year. And also differentiation to make sure that um. We're meeting the needs of all students who's in this curriculum, that all students have access. To the curriculum. Um. As Karen mentioned, our instructional time was increased to ninety minutes. Uh, this year from sixty minutes last year, which is recommended by the program. Uh, it's definitely a requirement. So things should be smoother as far as the pacing goes, we're hoping. Um. Fourteen teachers came this summer for grades five. It was pretty impressive for the two-day um, training with instruction partners and. Um, a lot of that work is being seen in the classrooms now. Um. We've been talking about it at our staff meetings a little bit, even across the board in other content areas. Productive struggles. One of the conversations are really kind of getting the teachers. To give more of the work to the students and um, be more of the facilitator and. Um, really getting the kids more engaged and involved in the curriculum. Um. All our small group instruction is skill focused and uses the recommendations from the program. Evidence-based programs, strategy, strategies, excuse me. Um. We are also finding it quite to share with um, families, so caregivers. So we're starting to put um. Just little updates about CKLA and Caminos and the other. In um, some words at Fowler. I know the teachers also have um, neat uh, banners that go home. We are monthly. So they've been including things in grade three specifically, could be four and five as well. Um, keep an eye on the marketing to make sure that we've started to include things um, as we're getting up and running in our smores and some more.
So first before I start, um, I do want to thank Denise for coming back. I think she's positive. Uh, Karen joining us. I I gotta honestly say, Rob and I have talked about this earlier. They are such a significant um, support and key key to this. Um, mission that we're having. Um, this being my first year here, I'm also learning a lot, you know, stuff they learned last year. I'm learning about the program. Uh, but I can talk about the three of my next step, which focuses on the same four core areas that uh. Green Meadow focused on the professional developments, instructional planning, curriculum resources and collaboration. Um, first of development, development is always an ongoing thing for 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 all curriculum areas. You're going to hear this throughout the rest of our presentation. Uh, but grades three and five, they're focusing on meeting students, all of our students' needs um, through differentiation, uh, a variety of. Um, strategies. I I did a quick survey of our staff. Over the past couple of days, just to kind of hear from them about um. What they're doing in the classroom that perhaps when we visit, we're not seeing. I was read off a couple in small group instruction, um, providing interventions as needed. Uh, provide student with students with typing options. Partner work. Students reading to themselves, students reading with their partners, doing some daily vocabulary building, practice. Utilizing graph, a variety of graphic organizers. Uh, and the list could go on and on. I probably could list about a hundred different things that came through. I just wanted to summarize a quick few that I, you know, uh, stood out to me. Um. Grades three to five teachers continue to work with the implementation with implementation partners um, to strategize scale and instruction. And our instructional planning, um. MTSS and Title One teachers, which Denise is one of our Title One teachers. Um. They're working with grade level teams to analyze and assess data and instruction for them for our students. Uh, curriculum resources. Um, our teachers are implementing all the components of the CKLA and the Caminos. Um, and I know we, this is kind of a a thread that has been. Weaved into all of uh, our presentation sign, including including our budget presentations, but the ninety-minute leadership loss and the fidelity of teaching the curriculum. Uh, and what what our teachers are using is a lot of their uh. Common planning time to talk about. How they're teaching, what they're teaching, what strategies they're using, what's working well, what's not working so well. Um, and so they're they're doing a fantastic job of that. And that kind of ties into collaboration. Uh. We are focusing always on meeting all of our students' needs. Uh. We've obtained a a chain, an additional grant. Um, where we're going to be using that to do some vertical work. Uh, and some grade level professional development. Forward.
So grades six to eight, um, some updates. It was interesting. Meg, um, Sullivan and I, second grade ELA teacher and I were chatting at nature's classroom today. About my coming and doing the presentation. I said, is there anything you really want me to say? And she said, what? Yeah. Um, you know, six to eight. She's like, people need to remember that's our jam. We're certified ELA teachers, like for the most part, like. That's our jam. So they're taking this online um, program and they really have to kind of make it their own, knowing. All the. All that they know of best practices. So she said, you know, it's really important for for everyone to recognize that. You know, we have this resource, we're using it, we try to use it with fidelity, but we also have to kind of make it our own, which. Seemed a little bit different than the CKLA, um, especially because all of it is. Online. It's a digital platform that they have. Um. Which goes right into, we did purchase hard copies of all of the units. For um, all six, seventh, and eighth grade teachers. So they have a class set. We didn't get it for every kid because we don't know like how that's going to work out. So they're they have the option to pull kids off the computers. And use uh, these resources as well. Um, vertical collaboration has been provided a little bit. We definitely are planning to do more. One thing I have to add is Brian has been amazing. He's reached out to me on numerous occasions and to the teachers. Directly saying, how can we help? How can we support? CKLA got this grant funding for grades three to five, CKLA and Caminos, but six, they didn't. The grid does not include those grade levels. So they also have new resources and so Brian has been so supportive about. What do they need? We'll provide it. Let's figure it out. And I've sent some surveys to the teachers and they've been, they're like, we're good, we're good. They just want time together right now. To be able to kind of plan. Um, we're, we've done uh, day the other day. I think we've got a. Um. Uh, the. The early release day time coming up. And then in December, Keith and I are going to try to. See if we can be strategic and choose a day that we can kind of release them from the classroom to just kind of work together. Um. We're looking at opportunities for them to visit possibly some other local districts that are in using CKLA, but. I think we're kind of ahead of the curve. Everyone else is implementing kind of this year. So we're like, if you're ahead, we're fine. Um, I'm still looking around. I think. You can Charlton, it's like one school, one or two schools that possibly might be um, something that we could look into, but. They, what they mostly ask for is to collaborate with each other and. Anything that we're doing with the CKLA that they can be included in. We're going to add them in that as well. Um. We have an Exceler subscription for the district, I believe. And that's helped a little bit with for the teachers to be background knowledge and differentiate levels a little bit. So. Um, they've been able to use that a little bit, they've said in the classroom.
So again, we're focusing on those four uh, four areas of development, instructional planning. Curriculum, resources and collaboration. And Denise did touch on a lot of points that I'm going to bring up, but again, professional development, grade six to eight. Continues to be a high priority and a focus. Um. We're focusing on strategies to meet the specific needs of our multilingual and special education students as well, uh, up in the upper. Rates. Uh, through instructional planning, um, our MTSS teacher is working with grade level teams, um, continually analyzing assessment data. And focusing on forecast responses so they can. You know, find and develop strategies that our students can can use to kind of. Improve on some deficits that we're seeing through data and. Teachers are collaborating, members with their grade level teams, improving writing score on forecast. Actually, some of our grade levels um. Do their professional practice goals have. Secrets around that area. Uh, curriculum resources, as Denise mentioned, uh. Amplify is strictly online um, resource. Um. But we have heard. The um, hard copies. For for some of the units for our kids to actually get. Literature in their hands, which is fantastic. And collaboration continues. Um, it's ongoing. These vision that we're planning additional opportunities and she she made mention to some of the work we just started on our last staff meeting, um, doing some vertical vertical work. Um, particularly around productive struggle. Um, what does a fourth grader look like in a productive struggle? And what does an eighth grader look like? So vertically, our our teachers um. Follow followed a a protocol to discuss that. So our fourth grade teachers are, okay, we need to get our kids to this and. Our eighth grade teachers are looking, oh, this is where our fourth graders are coming from. And then we have all of the middle grades seeing that as well. Um. Again, utilizing our common planning time where our special educators are part of that, talking about Amplify, talking about the curriculum. And what our students need to.
For the test presentation, if. Tired, wanna give. If you wanna think about that, if you wanna send any questions, everybody should answer to, if you have questions right now, and we cheers probably would, but. Just because it's.
Yep, I know that, well, Denise, you have to go back to nature's classroom, right?
I am gonna head back in a little bit.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions, but I'll, I'll go to. Around Beth. Okay, let me start, okay. Alright, I will start then. So for the K through one, I mean, K through two. Can you give me some information about how the literacy update's specific to supporting our Spanish immersion? Classrooms and what kind of professional development and interventions are available as we. They're meeting with the teachers.
Sure, so our Spanish immersion teachers have actually been a part of the professional development that we're doing. In terms of work around Early Bird and Lexia. And interpreting the data, they've been part of all of that professional development. Last year, we were working on structures such as interactive writing, shared reading, all of that. Our Spanish immersion teachers were part of as well, they use a different program called Be Visión, which is the first program that the Spanish immersion. Teachers had selected to pilot and then. And so that's the program that our kindergarten, first and second grade. Teachers are using, it does encompass all of the structures that we need to see in our early literacy programming. Including phonics for Spanish, the D M C awareness, they're doing small group instruction, it's skills based, based on the data that they have. We're using Early Bird, that gives this data about how a child is growing in terms of their English literacy skills. But we use M class, dibbles specifically to keep track of how our students are growing in English and in Spanish. And then this year, our Spanish immersion classes took map growth. In Spanish language arts, not in English language arts, so that we could be tracking how students were progressing in their Spanish. Literacy skills.
Okay, and, and I, the reason why I'm asking, I know Chuck was here. When we were going over the M C A S presentation and one of the key points he brought up about the third grade. Literacy that a lot of that, maybe where those scores weren't quite where they needed to be, were somewhat attributed to. The Spanish immersion students and, you know, having that first year, third grade. You'd be getting just initial in language coming in, and so when I looked at. Like Milis, who also has a Spanish immersion program, their scores are not quite as, as low as ours for a third grade. And so I was certainly interested in understanding what kind of best practices we can learn to be supportive of those kids. I think the way he framed it was that as you follow them, the scores got better. In later grades, but. The question I had to him was, was that a result of these kids doing better? Or these kids leaving the program, because I know several, several kids do end up between third and sixth grade. Leaving the Spanish immersion program, and I think there probably is a direct correlation of your scores are gonna improve if the kids who are. Having difficulty learning it or, or later on, you know, they're not continuing on, so that's something I just wanna ask about and just think about in our future presentations is. What kind of literacy support to include a little bit of. Updates on, on that as well, because that's a good chunk of our, our, our population there as well. And if there's been any thought to, as our E L population has expanded to explore. A dual, not dual, is it? Where you have a both, it's not dual, what's the other immersion program where you have, you pushing the. You have this in Hudson, don't you, Beth? Right, so is, is that an opportunity that we could say, look, is there? You know, we can support, you know, not just teaching Spanish, but also other, other children who have E L. Needs, is there an opportunity, just a small district?
I do wanna add Natasha, that we didn't include in the presentation, we did add a position at Green Meadow that is a title one position. And that teacher provides intervention specifically to our Spanish immersion programs. And so, you know, she's allocated to providing support to kindergarten through third grade in Spanish. Or in English, depending on what the student is identified is needing, and then she's also supporting our multilingual teachers. By providing additional intervention and support to some of our E L learners. And so that, that was created for this year. With, with this sole intent of supporting our Spanish immersion program as well as their multilingual learners. You know, I think. I, I think that that, that layer has been particularly helpful. I think your other question about exploring a dual language program, that's philosophically a shift. From our Spanish immersion program and is probably a different conversation, it's not totally based in, in our literacy presentation. It's a little bit bigger than that.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I imagine you having, it is a lot, it's a two-way immersion basically, so I, I don't imagine that. It has been explored a lot, but I know that our, our E L population is growing and. I didn't know if there is an opportunity there to say, okay, we're a small town, we, we really like our immersion program. How do we, is there, is there a thought to maybe making it more inclusive to meet not just teaching Spanish, but more. For those who might be part of the L, so again, not a question I would ask that, think that you would have answered for tonight, but just something that I know some other school districts have. Have done and, and utilize instead of a, a one-way immersion. And then. I'll move on if that's okay to, thank you very much as well. The. The K, oh, the grades three through five. Next steps. Can you get a little bit more, I know there's a lot about collaborating, but what the data, I guess I would, I'd really wanna see some more data points on. What those teams are, are looking at the M T S S and how, how, how we're. I guess reframing or where we're needing to address. Things a little bit different, because I know there's a lot of data that has, it's, you can, you know. Live and die in data, but what specific ones are you kind of tracking to measure progress or? Where we need to shift, and I know that, that comes in different, different grades or different.
So for three to five, we've been definitely, Lauren and I have spent a lot of time looking at data. And I'm working primarily with grades three to five doing title one intervention, so. I'm doing a lot of progress monitoring, using dibbles and mazes specifically. I'm also using a title one, a phonics program called, well, it's a phonics foundation program. Called U Fly from the University of. It's University of. Most struggling readers, and so I'm following data using that as well, we're also, you know, we're using the map. Data, but that's kind of helped us to target where to start, but the growth data is really gonna kind of tell us. You know, what we're, where we are in January, so. Lauren, as the M T S S person, she rarely goes and meets with the teams. So she'll meet with the grade level teams and bring in the data to, you know, go over it with them to really target, and she's using. You know, she, some of it she's using for some of the M C A S data to look at writing, because Matt doesn't have writing, so that's kind of a big. Area that we're looking at. We also, you know, I share everything with all of the teachers so that they can see the progress monitoring as we go. All of our data is on like a Google Sheets and shared with all teachers, so they have access to, to it anytime. But Lauren's kind of been the one that's been targeting the grade level teams and working with them on the data.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mary?
Yeah, so thank you very much, every time this comes about, I, I just, you know, obviously. Near and dear, but to the heart, but so for years. We have fallen short, I think with the M C A S with the writing piece, so can we speak to like the percentage of time that's spent in a figure and it's probably. Or here toward the lower levels, you know, for the reading and maybe less for writing and maybe as it goes, because the kids get older. And the other piece to that is not only in the literacy part of their day, but to cross-reference it to the other parts of the. So can you guys talk about that?
And Karen to fill in is, is, I would say is. Writing, if you notice, was a, was a difficulty, we took a look at M C A S, I think M C A S is just one data point. But we did take a look at how our third grade was doing, we used that information in order to move all the way down to all of our grades. Our third grade actually has it as their student goal this year, we're very proud of that as far as I can look at writing. So they have taken a piece of, C K L A has more writing that's involved in that program, so they're using that. The second grade, and, and we've, we've put into the schedule a systematic time. For each of the grades to have writing in their schedule, so first grade has it and, and, and. Second grade has it, and second grade is doing a really nice job in order to do this, I've been viewing some of the lessons this past week. As far as that goes, and it's a build, to build up from K all the way through. And, and we are pressed more and more today, superintendent and I will walk around our class, we saw third grade. They were able to, in order to, they read a story, they were able to tell it back to everybody with details from the story. And then they're gonna go in and they'll write about that story, put that in a journal as a full, you know, paragraph and on and on. It's a, it's a work in process, without a doubt, but we have a goal in mind before the M C A S has come back. To demonstrate improvements in that one definite one area of writing. There is no one singular writing program, unfortunately, that you're gonna find throughout the state. We've discovered, discovered all over by talking to other literacy coaches, and a lot of it unfortunately is made up. We, we continue to broaden and working our best, but that's where a lot of our coaching comes from, our literacy coaches. In that aspect of writing for them, so it is on our mind, we know it, we found an area. We'll continue to work on it and give you an update by the end of the year.
And how about utilizing it like in, you know, in science?
The topics are not just like one story, but as they notice and they talk about news E L A. And we saw a second grade use that material today, and they, they're different reading levels for kids, they're able to go back. There's science topics in there, history topics in there, other things that are in there too, so it's, it might be in a writing, but it's not just. English, read a, read a story about English, it's about other topics that are there, so we're bringing it all, all the way around. It's gonna take a little bit, it's gonna take a little bit of time, we've been really pushing on the reading and everything there. And we know that writing is our, our next aspect to this, but it did come from that point of looking at the testing. And saying, is, is a deficit, and how much better we would have been if we could improve that one aspect.
I know, years and years and years, so we keep trying to do this writing. Yes, you have to, to get up there, so.
Well, some really good news, grades six to eight last year, Meg worked, spent a lot of time with T S S. Working with the grade level teams around specifically M C A S writing, what just. What, what they thought about was, do kids really know what the expectations are? And they really broke it down and they came up with like a whole protocol for the kids to go through to do some practice M C A S. Writing days and. They real improved their scores significantly, grade six to eight. They did a little bit with four and five, but their emphasis was six to eight, Lauren and I are gonna take that to the four and five, which. I've done in the past, and I'm like, oh, right on that, Lauren and I have worked with grades four and five, like the eighth grade team made it their goal, Lauren's. Now it's just Lauren, not Lauren and Meg, so. With one person, she really doesn't have the time to do all of what she invented last year, but she, they felt that they really built capacity. In the teams, the eighth grade team was thrilled, they made that their goal, so that's their spot for them, they're all focused, bought in. Grade six to, six and seven, same thing, they may need a little bit more of Lauren, but the grade seems to be like, we got this. So that's good, I mean, that was the whole idea around M T S S to go to capacity in teachers. I feel like that's happened there, four and five and Lauren and I have been working with them, I've already talked with their. Teacher leaders and they're excited for us to do some of that work, so we'll be going into classes, working with teachers and the students. And see if we can kind of show them, and it's not like we're trying to teach M C A S, right? What we're trying to do is teach them, these are the expectations, and as Rob said, or Karen, if you said it, there's a lot more writing in C K L I. I've got into classrooms, I'm like, wow, look at, like, they're just producing more, so that's been really interesting. Cool to see, because it's just been a short time, we've been doing, so.
I just, you know, working. Having sent it in school convention for three years, so like third cycle of writing support and it, you know, being brush referenced. How the subject matter, and then for some reason it falls apart, yeah, I don't know, it's because different staff, different, you know, priorities, we. We, I don't know, but.
I agree, you know, this time. Yeah, which, yes. It's at the top of our list for focus. For really working, so.
Notice a lot of Steve's staff, and, and even since September to now, as you visit the classrooms, Sam and I are writing, really have. I'm suited to putting on paper, isn't just. The amount, it, it's got quality to it. You don't have that data, I think I did, but what Denise referred to. Talk about data and what Lauren's put together, it's remarkable, it shows what our middle school brings. Okay, I'll get that too. Denise, I'll get that, maybe you guys actually see that, it's, it was quite remarkable, what, what changed.
Lauren was looking at like some of the students that she knew, and just kind of like looking at them like. Do they not know what they're, what they're asking them to, to do, so that was just really just making sure everybody, it was very transparent. What the expectations were, it was personally patient, so, you know, that was really one of the most important pieces. Making sure that all the teachers, and it wasn't just the E L A teacher telling it, just the whole team's grade sixteen, which is so. Really key, because now they're doing writing across the curriculum to benefit.
We have tried.
We've been trying.
Reading and writing is being absolutely essential. Also, thank you. That's it.
Thanks, um, thank you for all of this, I have a lot of questions, of course, I'm very curious, I'm not gonna answer. I would just ask a couple, I was wondering if when, you know, I wouldn't get very good if we're gonna get the seat. The two data, rising and not have worked out for kids.
Yeah, we have to, we have to be able to put it all together, you know what I mean, so we're still learning to be honest with people, I'm getting them. So we'll have the data points, but then we have to meet together as a team and be able to put that together before we can. Give it to you guys, I'm asking, it's a. It's so cool, yeah.
And then talk about PD and all your different grade areas, and I'm just curious about how you're specifically choosing, but kind of. Staff, if that's, you know, how are we targeting, sort of.
Alright, well, you know, I think across the grade levels, we select our PD based on. What resources we are trying to implement and PD around assessments that we're giving and how to. Analyze and use the data, so all of our PD when it comes to literacy has really been based on both of those things. Our PD and K to two has been around looking at the data from Hurleyburg, from Lexia. From dibbles eight, how to take that data and then apply it to planning and executing lessons that support students in their growth. In that area, and then all of that around, you know, the phonics to reading work. Implementing that curriculum and that for grades three through five, it's all of our PD has been around. Implementing the C K L A curriculum, we did some work around applying Y L to C K L A. Because it is, you know, it's a resource that's designed for all learners, but it doesn't necessarily include supports embedded in it. To support all learners, and so, you know, as teachers are getting to know the curriculum. And so, you know, as teachers are getting to know the curriculum and teaching it to fidelity. That takes an incredible amount of time and energy because. And then, you know, adding on resources from No Bat Associates to then look at it in that lens of YL. So that we can support all of our learners as they're engaging. So that's really how all of our PD has been implemented, I think is the leadership. Our people around is that to. Uh, in the same way, we talk, we talk about systematic and explicit instruction for kids. As educators, we also need systematic and explicit instruction to really do what we're trying to do well. And so, you know, I think that in, in education, in the past, there's sort of this history, not exclusive to Mater. Of these one-off PDs, right? And so as a teacher, you feel a little bit like you've got some intentional issues because you're like, what direction am I supposed to be looking at? And am I still doing the thing that we want to go last fall? And so the messaging that we really try to instill is that. You know, but we're all in, like, everything is a layer, this is a rollout, because the end goal that. You're equal to do all those layers, but nobody's expecting you to do them all at once, do them all perfectly. Like, there's a, a learning career for staff too, and trying to keep it really focused.
Sorry, I have one more question and then I'm free and done. Um, looking back at the timeline about the assessments for. There's, they're, they're getting the assessment, this is, I'm sorry, K elementary um. For K through two, so they're getting assessments in um, September, October. Various assessments, but parents and caregivers are not gonna receive results until February. Can you explain that a little bit, cuz that seems very um, I don't know if I missed that in before, but that's a very large gap. In, in that, I don't know, window as a parent, speaking to that, if my, my kid was, you know, getting assessed. But then I'm not gonna get the results for three months later. Um, what is that, what should I believe is happening in that window of time? Cuz I know like from, there's a, if the, there's child find. Um, you know, that, that child might need interventions, there should be other testing, there should be notifications, there should be um. No delay, right? So how does that work?
Natasha is, um, we start off with our early bird assessments, which is, which is go through in our in class. Um, then a notification does go out to parents, that's uh, that's uh, as we were just talking about, that's the no five. So we do that, and that states that if students are substantially significantly behind, then we end up talking with the parents. Uh, we use that information internally in order to create, you know, with our groups inside of our classes. But if we need any pull-out groups, um, those one. If those pull-ups that need, are needed, we are in communicating with the parents about that. So they're partners and they understand what's going on there. Um, the MAP one is the one that, if we're talking about is that's going out. And you have one in September, and then you have one again in January. So that, that's a growth and that's, we wanted to take that, that's two data points. So we wanna make sure that parents are able to get that um, in order to understand those. Any parent who does, you know, of course, contact us and we use that information during our, our teacher meetings with parents. Whether it's conferences and other things, but um, the early bird has been a benefit to us. To see what the skills are that we need for the kids that are coming in. And then uh, how we're going to form our groupings within our classrooms, and then obviously we communicate with the parents. On a neat basis of if those pull-up groups have to be taken and then kids need more supplemental, you know, work uh, through that. Uh, we don't, we are working towards an area of where we can send out like. Four hundred, you know, types of information to people three times a year. Um, but we still have to, I'll be honest, it's something we still have to work towards. It, it's our goal of ours, but there's some, there's some systematic pieces to that that we have to work with.
And I, I think just to, what I wanna make sure is not, what I wouldn't wanna see as a parent's experience is that. There's an assessment that's done in October, September. And they're not having awareness of maybe poor results until January or February, right? That there is some level, it sounds like that's what you're saying, and I just wanna make sure that they would be brought into that conversation before then. Um, but that's the part I wanna make sure is understood for the community as well. Is that they wouldn't be a surprise if by February, like, okay, um, these results happened. Is that right?
Conferences, teachers did have, like, during conferences in October, teachers did speak to parents if there were concerns. Uh, and did outline what next steps would take place for students.
Right, thank you very much.
Yes.
And that's eight to five.
Great. That's all I have, thank you all very much for your, for hanging out and answering our questions. Thank you, good night. All right, um. P card? Is Wayne still? With us or Colleen, are you?
Well, I can do this.
I'm here.
Oh, hi Wayne, I know this is like something we've printed already a couple times, so I just wanna make. Um, if you had anything in particular to say on it before we, we took it up for a discussion and vote.
No, I think, um, as you know, I presented it to, to you and Mary at the budget subcommittee uh, meeting. And um. Um, you, you guys were, were, were kind enough to approve it and forward it to the full committee. And I believe everyone has had access to the slides for a while. And so, uh, considering the late time or whatever, I would ask, are there any questions?
No, I, I don't, um, I don't have any questions, but just for a larger conversation, basically, we're being more efficient in how we. What a P card is, is a, a purchase card, and so this allows staff to not incur. Out-of-pocket personal expenses immediately before they're able to get reimbursed, which is currently the practice. But we would have a controlled mechanism of a, a district card that some of these things like. Um, like the Zoom subscription that we use or things to that effect that. Um, would be able, the person wouldn't be, and I just wanna make sure I'm at a high level speaking to that. It's just building efficiency and, and being less um, financially burdensome on, on staff. If, if we can have a business expense attributed to the P card, is that right?
Exactly, uh, the other area is, as you said. Um, you know, we got to go to a conference that involves overnight stage. It usually involves people putting that type of thing on a personal credit card. And carrying that balance and coming in with receipts and bank statements and waiting to be reimbursed. Um, or teachers uh, that has a class section that wants to go on a trip. And they don't accept purchase orders, often the teacher will um, have to put that on his or her personal credit card. Hopefully this would alleviate those types of situations.
Okay, um, Mary?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, Elizabeth?
Sounds great.
All right, and um, I. Just wanted to add, it says on here, it was like a small number, about six cards, do we imagine just from a controls perspective? Cuz I don't remember hearing how many, um, is it just gonna be one card, are we starting off with? Um, the principals, or I guess what's the thought process as this is rolled out from um.
Well, in discussion with, with superintendent, we thought, uh, I believe the number was approximately. Five or six, uh, roughly one per building. Um, one for superintendent's office, one for the business office, what is that, five? And I forget, maybe one for IT or what, I can't remember what the, perhaps the sixth one was. But um, in discussion with, with Brian, that was the general thought.
Okay, um, I don't have any other questions that I can't address more in our subcommittee, so um. I think I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the school district. For the school district to apply for a procurement card for use for um. Used by the business manager and our superintendent for a mannered business expenses.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? Okay, uh, roll call of Elizabeth?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Natasha, yes, okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Wayne, thank you, Colleen, thank you, Brian. Okay, um. Uh, moving on, uh, oh, chair report, I'll make this brief, the only thing that I, I had really. Was to update on, I went to FinCom, they approved the reserve fund transfer for um. The, the system that Chief Lawless is working with the district on. They had very minimal questions and she explained it very, very clear and thoughtfully, um, way better than I could, so that went well. Um, the other topic that got brought up was about PEG access. Uh, Mary and. Peter brought it up, that while though our town administrator continues to say. That the town supports W A V M. But realistically, uh, FinCom is worried, how does that translate to funding? And I think that's the question, the outstanding question that everyone has. Is, um, no one doubts the support of the W A V M program, but if our PEG access funding is cut. Uh, next month. By a substantial amount, how does that, how do we, you know, does that mean to be, our budget gets cut to support the W? Like, you know, that's the, that is the un- unknown, and so there is a concern at FinCom. Um, that the commitment to funding that may not exist entirely and that. We're looking to avoid surprises, right? We don't wanna have surprises in, in January. So that got brought up and, and discussed, um. And then just, I know that we have, uh, Colleen, I might have some, um, I was looking at trying to reconcile our budget calendar. To our meeting calendar and I might need a, might send you an email on that, I think there was. I couldn't remember which day was off, but in either case, that, um, I know we had to change something, their budget subcommittee for December. And I just wanted to make sure that we're, we were all set with our meeting schedule for that. And that's it, just, uh, you know, happy Veterans Day for everyone who, who celebrated in our community. Um, and, and Wayne, oh, I think, I think Wayne hopped off, but I, I saw him in the video too, so it was great that he was able to participate. Mary, did you have any questions or anything? No, Elizabeth? Any updates?
No.
Nope, all right. Mary, did you wanna say something?
All good.
Okay, all right, um. No minutes, right? And then. Did uh. Warrant, um, Colleen, do we have, was it twenty-one and twenty-two?
Twenty-three.
We did twenty. Twenty-three to?
To twenty-six.
Okay, all right, so um, without objection, I will accept the approved warrants for twenty-three. I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-four dash zero two three dash zero two four dash zero two five dash zero two six. Okay. And. Now, um, we will move to go into an executive session under chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A three. To discuss collective bargaining with the teachers' union, M E A, since an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position. Of the public body in the chair, so declares, the committee will not, uh, does not intend to return to open session. I will enter to roll call, Mary Branley. Elizabeth Albota. Natasha Barry, yes.